Eventually, right? Yeah, I need to find that, it's alright. It's pretty good outside there, that's okay.
I'm going to thank you.
Mr. Allen?
Your owl.
I spent a whole time with you. Yeah. You're one of your heroes.
You think that's good?
Is that good enough?
Yeah, it's running right now. I mean, you can pick it up and slide everything over if you want.
Um, I need to watch out. I cheated at school, I can work. Right? I didn't rest time.
And cheating.
You get ready to go to the squirrel.
Sorry. I helped him figure out how to use the YouTube so much. That's never a short call. Oh, looky there. One person. Hello.
I don't think it was a dog.
You're as great as.
Yes, or actually, you talk just to me.
She's speaking probably for four hundred. Yeah, I shut up. I don't. I don't know.
Yeah.
That's what you do on my marriage day.
I'm performing all things as soon as possible.
I'll be truth.
Sure, please.
I know that's what it is. Do you have any more?
Yes, we should.
Yeah, yes. Yes, it was a family, so I originally didn't see those options.
The others were not prepared. And when that was not, it's not a problem.
Okay.
Well, you said this year, since you can buy a purchase of the service.
Yeah, it's nice.
All of those things are happy, like, all you push, I don't push you too. Versus one piece of that.
Well, they change. Well, these are related to university too.
So I tell you what, there's a lot of in turn. I can tell you it works. Not yet, I don't wish to. That's because we're all familiar with this. There was, there was nine down the road, you know, where it was hard to go. So you just, oh, you've occurred to me. I didn't think of it before, but I advise them, he's away. I got some, you got a few of this.
Thank you, Eric. Yep, I'm a daughter of sheriff, please. I know it.
Okay, it's seven o'clock, we're gonna call the meeting to order. Uh, pledge allegiance.
One more minute. I can hear something. What did you say?
Seven.
Seven. Pledge allegiance. I state some. That you're the Republic, for reasons, fans, one nation, under God. The Constitution.
Roll call, Gary? Mary? Ken's here, Kara? Jason?
Here.
All are present. Was there any additions or changes that need to be made to the agenda?
Can I have a clarification under I one? Unfinished business, um, it lists consideration of best for his responses, um, is that agenda item meant to? Or can it include anything else we need to discuss on that particular thing, or just the responses to their, to the questions? That's what I'm getting at, is we may have a couple other things to consider than just those answers.
Well, well, what would you like to add to that? Um, I mean, we're, we're gonna have a discussion about it, we can discuss anything in that section about the
the project?
The project.
Okay. I just wanted, I just wanna make sure that was.
It's, it's not gonna be just voting, we're going to have each board member say what they wanna say.
Okay.
We're gonna, we'll take a lot of time on that to make sure we get it right. Anyone else? Did I get a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
We got a motion by Jason, do I have a second?
I'll start.
There's a motion by Jason, typed in by Gary. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, Carrie. Uh, approval of the previous meeting minutes?
You got public comments first?
Did I miss that again?
Yeah.
No chapter of who the meeting minutes are. There's public comments.
Mine's about four, but.
There's a, oh, I, I don't remember when we do it, where you do it.
This is mom.
It should be on your.
E, no wonder.
There you go.
We got it, we got it, no problem.
Okay. Uh, public comments?
Me, Pete. Um, normally the planning commission is supposed to be under information and reports, and somehow we weren't on the agenda this time, but I have news to report for you, and you all have them in front of you, I made a hard copy for you. Um, and you could have been in the meeting minutes if you want to, both of like, the like chart has been updated, and also the results of our meeting last week.
Did you send those this morning?
I sent them last week.
Hmm, I don't see them.
We got a minute after the meeting, I need to see you.
Me?
Yes.
Anyone else? Public comment, Karen?
Yes, um, we appreciate J C Robertson's many years of first responder service to our community. May God reward his self sacrifice with many years of joyful retirement. As township officials wrestle with the void left behind, I hope they'll stretch outside the box for renewal. It may be bad timing to add new recruits unless they are experienced and have greater availability to respond. Although funding solutions are not immediate, they may be on the horizon. It is my understanding that short term rentals have never been specifically permitted in R two, even though they have been allowed due to lack of enforcement, so grandfathering in does not seem to apply. Commercial use is specifically not allowed in R two, and neighbors have legitimate complaints. It probably makes sense to establish a moratorium on any additional S T Rs while developing a plan to balance one property owner's rights with neighbor's rights. I respect the environmental and safety concerns of our citizens, but any anger over battery storage should be directed at state officials rather than township officials. P A two thirty-three and two thirty-four took zoning control away from local units for the sake of green energy initiatives. Best per found at least two landowners here willing to sell. When the Republican Party took the majority in the Michigan House in twenty twenty-four, they attempted to roll back P A two thirty-three, but neither the Senate nor the governor are likely to go along with that. The township board even joined a lawsuit oppo- opposing the state's overreach of local zoning. The Gypsum Peak Project is likely to be permitted by the state before the lawsuit could be settled. Eagle representatives still pledge to protect wetlands, et cetera, but both political parties acknowledge a growing need to strengthen our power grid across the state. Because the state recognizes resistance to their takeover, they have offered a million dollar grant to soften the blow. Unfortunately, they have run out of uncommitted funds unless it is reestablished in their current overdue budget. This background may be new information to some here tonight, but it has been discussed in this room many times over the past two years. The public is always encouraged to stay engaged. And in memory of Charlie Kirk, he remained faithful to the end. I would agree that our culture is indeed at a true.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Now we'll get to the consent agenda. Uh, meeting minutes for previous meetings, we have a special meeting August twentieth. And regular meeting was, uh, the nineteenth of August, any comments from the board on the August nineteenth meeting minutes?
I have one for the regular board meeting, actually I have two. Uh, one, uh, under F one with a regular board meeting for July fifteenth, motion eight from Ken Spicer voted no, but it doesn't explain what the no was, so I would like to add the transfer station shed to that uh, particular item. Uh, the second one is that the, when there was a vote on the motion nine there, uh, it states that it was carried, I think, one or, or uh, denied one to three, uh, and actually, uh, our treasurer abstained from the vote, so I think that should be added as well.
Well, I don't know if I can add that. It doesn't have her reported at all, I'll have to look, I'm not sure if I can add that.
Fair enough.
Uh, I have a point of clarification on, um, it could be G twelve.
On the regular board?
Yes, sorry, regular board meeting, uh, G twelve under reports. Um, under supervisor Spicer reports, uh, in reference to the budget uh, for next year, it says approval is required by the board by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, is that uh, one that's legally required, I was thinking it was March thirty-first.
For which?
It's a.
For the new budget.
The state of Michigan through that, uh, what is it, what is it called?
It's recommended.
It's a, uh, highly recommended that you have it done early enough that you don't run into problems when you get into March, where you're at the last day trying to get it. We have all the data that we need right here on to do about it.
Uh, I mean, it makes sense to me, I just, if, if we're trying to be accurate with wording, maybe we should change that to recommended instead of required.
I, I think that'd be appropriate, because the state hasn't even got their, their budget done yet, so.
Or, I mean, I, I get what you're saying.
It's a great goal, we should try, definitely.
I agree, I agree. But saying that it's required is not legally accurate. G twelve.
Anyone on the regular board meeting? On the special board meeting, August twenty?
I have nothing.
No, no. Council fable, any questions on council fable?
No.
Payroll?
Uh, my only question on the payroll is, uh, you might, probably J C can answer this, but I see, uh, uh, Civic has a lot of hours compared to everybody else. He loves to work. He, he, it's his passion. If he's around, he's gonna get every single call. He outpaces everybody. That is a question of. Yeah, I suppose.
I think the red flag, J C, is sometimes he has more hours than calls.
That's right, yeah.
I think that's why, but it could be a longer.
The calls are longer than an hour.
That's the one reason it flags on.
Any other questions on payroll? Making account balances, any questions there?
I, I do have a question, um, this always, this report always comes vertical.
Yeah.
I know it's upside down. There we go, um. Our, well, first I was wondering if, if the lines were off, because I was having trouble making the numbers line up, but I'm just wondering, would it be difficult to get a breakdown of the pooled funds? Cause I think, the way I'm reading this, they're, they're all together, which I understand, we have general operating fire, police roads, but I think it, it, since it will probably become relevant to some future conversations, can we see how the general pooled funds are broken out into those subtopic or sub?
We will get it in the financials that are, that I'll send you the end of the month.
Okay.
They have the, the balance.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Did I get a motion to approve the consent agenda with changes?
Still move.
Got a motion by Gary, can I get a second?
A second.
Jason, you second that?
I think Mary beat me.
Mary beat you?
Yeah.
Well, this is the money, roll call, Walt, Gary?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Uh, Ken just, Kara?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Gary, by roll call, um, uh, information reports, fire department?
Well, I was in, I was looking over the reports, there were seven fire calls last month, and there was nineteen medicals. Um, thirteen of those medicals were priority ones, made extreme life threats, so Gary, to answer your question, I, I guess I understand the confusion, there were seven fire calls, you made six of them. There was nineteen medical calls, you made fifteen of them, that's, that's where he's getting, I mean, he rolls on everything, if, if he's around, he's gonna back us up, now with that, he takes a lot of call time at night where he doesn't get paid at all, and he just hangs out at the station waiting for a call. I mean, if there's anybody that is probably one of the, the most committed young men, Siemens the man. He's the man, so, um, you're just bringing it out there, and he, he's, he's taking his officer classes, he's taking his instructor classes, he's taking those kids and taking them in. And he's, he's gaited, and he's ready to rock and roll. But he's a very young man. So Jeremy and I used to run on every single call that we could as well. I mean, there was times where we had darn near a hundred percent on our old stations. As we get older, we know who's pushing those. But anyway, uh, there's that, so, um, yeah. Nothing too extraordinarily crazy uh, over this last, uh, timeframe. Uh, we did assist on that Bloomingdale call, that was horrific. Uh, we did run a critical incident stress brief. Um, and, uh, yeah. Things aren't really in the world, so, uh, we're just thinking, we're gonna keep our nose at it, and just keep things going well.
Well, your department dinner is just for the firefighters?
Uh, we canceled that, um, there's, the, the morale is a little dipped right now, and so people are kind of upset about everything in general. So we're just gonna, we're gonna fall back, and we'll have dinner at my house sometime.
Okay. Jeremy?
Well, there's department. This month was another busy one, eighty overall calls handled by the sheriff's department and Columbia Township, uh, totaling a hundred and four calls to include calls handled by state police or other surrounding agencies, um, yeah, not seeing a, anything that jumps out the sheet here at me that is outstanding. Um, reminds me of our one claim to loot that we had this month. So.
Hey, thank you. I don't see our county commissioner. Commissioner, so sir. Gary, anything on your report, written report?
Uh, only that, uh, it was quite busy this last month, uh, I personally visited at least eight different complaints that were called in. This is, this is my fill in my paperwork of what I've done. Uh, there were, in the month of August, there were, let's see, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen of them that I handled. Uh, and we sent the, uh, pictures and the information taped to the doors when the people weren't home. Uh, also met with Jeremy, and we formulated a, uh, uh, a follow-up method which he started already. Um, also I sent those on to the, uh, P C chair for an update on the log that you just handed out today. Uh, there's some that aren't quite on there yet, uh, Tasha has sent out numerous letters, and so has, uh, the the building inspector, Brian, uh, he's visited several. Uh, there's a procedure to follow in case it ends up in court, so we have to follow that procedure. So it's a little time consuming, but, uh, things are in the works, and they're being taken care of. Uh, two of them that I personally contacted have been resolved. Uh, matter of fact, I got a call from one of the people to put a complaint in saying thanks, uh, for the quick response. Uh, one of my found was just unfounded, so. Uh, I see that we have in here a revision for the complaint form, which is excellent.
Thank you, Gary.
Long time coming. Uh, so hopefully that'll help, uh, alleviate some of the questions and problems. Other than that, uh, the building for the transfer station was brought over today. Uh, placed where it should be, uh, the attendance, uh, happy with it. There's a couple of little things that we have to address, but they're very little. Also, the, uh, tower people were at the transfer station today, unloading, uh, a lot of equipment for the tower itself. Uh, I spoke with them, so that's in the process. Uh, things are moving, it's just, uh, sometimes a little slower than what we'd like to have done, but things are moving along.
Well, I'm gonna be removing the trees out for them.
No, they're gonna take care of it.
You talk to them?
I, I talked to them.
Okay.
Yeah.
They called me today, but.
Okay, well. That's what they do. They prefer the whole thing, and they're gonna take care. Off your place.
Fine. Less work for me. Anyone else? Up here? Report?
Um, summer taxes were due Monday, um, and seventy-five percent of the population brought them in on Monday. Um, so instead of them three months ahead of time, we're already starting, they already want printing and stuff for the winter tax bill to get started. So if anyone has a new, we're doing a newsletter on that one, so if anyone has anything, if you have something for the planning commission, or we would put that in, I'd need it probably by the end of this month, so we can get it to them.
End of September.
I've started.
September.
I've started.
You can just get it to me by the end of September, and I'll put it together. Um, that's it.
Anyone else? Emergency service? Well, J C Robertson, uh, presented his registration letter.
Resignation.
Resign.
And, uh, why don't you take it from there?
I've served in fire EMS since nineteen ninety-three. Thirty-two years. That has been a good run, I've done twenty-four of those years here. I've done two of those years as the chief. I think I've done six as the assistant chief. Four as the captain, and the rest is, is the support, so I, I teach, that's what I do. I take care of my neighbors, that's, I, I love my neighbors, and I may not know you, but I will give you everything I have when I'm there with them. I'm at a point where I am unwilling to bend any farther. To, to do anything different. There's things going on in our society, and it's time just to say enough, enough. And that's where I'm, I'm at the enough stage, I've had my will. I've run my course. I am not just gonna go unless so directed, if I'm directed about to do that, then I will. But my intention is to stay till twelve thirty-one, you know, December thirty-first, to assist with any transitions that need to happen. If I'm told just to get lost, I can do that too. Um, I'm gonna always serve. And I encourage you guys, all of you, to serve. Whatever that means. Serve at the food pantry, church, serve at commodities. I'm in here and led your voice. But doing nothing is gonna do absolutely nothing. I appreciate the time that I've had here, and, uh, if anybody wants to chat and chip on anything, good for it. And if you have any, uh, thing that you need to have, uh, an opinion about, believe me, my brother has, I'm gonna let you come and have him have it. Well, I had no, I'm teasing. So, but between my brother and I, we've got sixty-four years of combined experience. We know a couple of things. And so, we're getting tired, we're getting old. But that's not the reason beholden, so. Thank you very much.
I would just like to say, I appreciate, and I'm sure the board does, your willingness to give us this amount of time to investigate, to send feelings out. You have a, a replacement, which is gonna be hard to do on your behalf, Chief, I, I, I've known you for a while, and, uh, you've given a hundred ten percent all the time. And, uh, I know a lot of the people here, taxpayers, they'll see everything that happens. And, uh, I just want to say super kudos to you, and, and appreciate your time and your service, thank you.
Thanks, J C. Blessings on you, brother.
Back to you, twice.
No going away party? Nah?
Dying.
I know that.
Still live right over there, I mean, if I was dying, then yeah, like a party, but.
I'm just retiring, the township's not getting rid of it. You ain't going there.
I like that.
True statement.
Uh, you're gonna be missed. But I understand you're still gonna be around, and if we need help, we got help. I guess we need to get a motion to accept his resignation letter effective, um, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
Well, I guess I made the motion, Gary seconded.
Okay.
Um, need to take a roll call, Gary?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Ken's, yes, Kara? And Jason?
Yes.
I always wonder if everyone says no, what does that mean?
Well.
It's just simple.
I would, I would say no, but he, he's, like he said, he's got a lot of years and what he wants.
Yeah, do it anyway.
Okay, we need to consider some actions to take, uh, for obtaining a replacement. This job description, does that come from you, J C?
No, no, that's, that's part of what has been out there is S O P, S O G, go on, I think that's.
Have you read it, and you kind of agree with what's on it?
The one that's in our S O Ps, S O Gs, I don't, I, I haven't seen that copy that you have, so I would imagine that what you have is what you need. This was inside, you guys from the state of Michigan, with generally, general retired, interesting background, and what needs to be done, and education, that sort of thing, now, some of that may not apply, may not apply here because of our demographics, but it's. But it's, it's a uh.
Well, just, just as a point, a chief's a chief whether they're on a, a local department. Or a big time government, at the chiefs are held to the same. Whether you have four calls a year or four hundred calls, four thousand. We have to do all the same departments. It looked good in my eyes, brother. I didn't.
Right.
Just for your information, uh, for state certification requirements, they have three years to obtain those. And it's actually to. Well, so if you find somebody that's really, you think is, hey, sure, good. They got three years to obtain, actually to firefighter, uh, or fire officer level two. Uh, they haven't uh required level three yet. For chief officers, but they have a three-year mark, public act two ninety-one.
Uh, just uh. There were a little bit more on that. I've. I've sent some feelers out to people that are in the fire industry. Uh, contacted a couple of fire departments. Not all of them have responded yet. Uh, and there's people that are willing to. Go out and they. Have set feelers out to people that may be interested or some uh. Some other influential people that would help even in interviews if needed. Uh. So it's, it's, things are. Really preliminary now, but they're starting, so.
Do we need to consider advertising?
Absolutely.
Then we probably ought to start that sooner than it.
Yep, tomorrow.
Do we need, do we need, wanna advertise the job description?
I will think so.
You wanna put that on our website also? Is it, is there any corrections that we need to make to that? Could you mark that up so that we can?
I think the only thing that is what Jeremy just said is first day you have two, you have two, uh, three years to get the qualifications.
Yeah, that's just the guideline and.
Oh, no, this is way higher than I think you're going to get. Basically what I'm saying, and if you find somebody that. Maybe close to the, to the minimum qualification, minimum qualifications would be this go on. And a couple of other things gone.
Yeah.
There's the minimum qualification, say it three years to get that. So. Just my, my qualified opinion, I would tell you flat out. Post some of this. Don't post all this. You won't get any.
Well, that's what I said, it may not apply to us right now. So that, yeah, so I agree with you. Yeah.
Well, I hope so.
Well, yeah.
So does Karen need like a market up top? Is there? Somebody say.
Kara has a thought. Is that what you said?
Uh, they need some.
Oh, I'm sorry, but I just.
That's fine.
Oh, yeah.
I was just.
What, what I would suggest is. Is you get with it. Uh, J C gets with it. Some of the board members here, uh, anybody else with any kind of fire. Uh, knowledge or training or whatever, and then we can fine tune it and then. Put up advertisement out for that position, not that whole thing, like you said. And shorten it up. We can do that in a week, I'm sure. Just suggestion, from this one guy up here.
Is there a place to post internally?
We're MTA, but the township website, reminder, South Haven Tribune and Facebook pages. That's what I have down there. Something else we should add to this?
I didn't hear everything you just said.
Oh, the MTA has a thing for people looking for fire chiefs and positions open.
Yeah.
The township website. Our reminder, South Haven Tribune and Facebook.
Because.
So I uh. Right now, we've got four officers just named. As the chief, Jeremy is the assistant. And then we've got John as the, as the captain and Joe's lieutenant. John is the only one that's got. The qualifications for internal candidate. Uh, Joe's still working on his certs. Come, come December thirty-first. My intention is not, my pager will go off and, and my, my pager and my radio will. Be delivered back to the station. And, and if there's no chief by then, Jeremy has agreed to do interim chief. Until such time as a, a different chief is available. Um. But there's, there's a couple of, you know. Things there. We could talk about them if you'd like, but I can, I can tell you from an industry standard. It will be hard to find. Someone who wants to do the job for the number that we have. The paper for. The paperwork is extraordinary through the state. It's, it is worse than it ever has been. An unknown person. Now, internal people, they're gonna take it because they have an investment. They live. Like John and Joe and, and all of our team really. Uh, live here. The, the part timers, they don't live necessarily here, but they're invested in. The culture that we are building or have been. And so you've got a lot of young people that are hungry to do the right thing for the right way and learn. Um, so I mean, we have an opportunity as a community to go, yes. We wanna do this and we wanna do it right, or no. We don't, and that's fine too. Either way, it's fine. We just need to make a decision. The middle of the road is a great place to get run over. You know, choose one, choose one or the other, choose the left side of the road or the right side, doesn't matter which. But get to a side of the road so that we're not hurting. Hurting our responders, because the reality of it is. Uh, one of the worst things that us as responders in public safety, and I'm including Jeremy Lance and I'm just with dude. Is we see the worst humanity. When they call for help. We, when they call, we go. And we see the horrors long after the call is over. And that's quite frankly, the, the Amish incident was the exclamation point for me. I don't wanna see how that's a destruction and I'm tired of it. You know, and I'm not the only one. I am. A well-just-given preacher. There are those that would end their life. This is no joke. Our suicide rates for public safety are among the top in the nation.
For capital, higher than military.
Higher than military for.
Exponentially over the last ten years.
And so it's. It's very hard to swallow some of the, some of the. Disinformation that's out there. It's just, it's, it's. It's better to withdraw and take care of our own. So, um, just be mindful of that. Um. And quite frankly, my brother should have been the chief anyway. He's far smarter than I am. He might be younger and I might be prettier, but he's far smarter than I am. I can tell you with assurance, South Haven is not interested in any kind of partnership. I talked to him today at medical. Maybe they don't have room for one more human being. We do have. Some solid ideas or starts for you if you're interested.
Well, we're interested. Oh. Do we need a motion to? Why don't we just make, get a motion to uh. Start putting feelers out in the web, websites and in the, the newspapers and. Do we have a list of those in our department that would be interested in the fire, fire position?
Anyone that remains is interested. Right, I, I mean, I mean, I'm gonna break. I, I know that John. John has just bought his house, so got a huge loan. And he lives in Breedsville now, bought his house. And he told me point blank, I'm invested, I'm here forever. He said, that's great, because I need someone to come and pick me up eventually. You know? I know that John will be around. There's only two other people of my age in that group. I know one of them's gonna be up for medical. He's not helping come back. Joe's already far. And then uh, Jason Kruger is probably gonna stay into it. Depending on the, Jason doesn't pull punches, so. If it gets kind of, kind of twinkie, he'll say, ask, was I, don't get any on you, so. The rest of them are all under the age of twenty-five.
Maybe it'd be wise for us to set up a couple of people uh. And interview your, your personnel over there and get their feedback and see what's going on. And uh. Uh, along with the females, we could maybe have the females, you know, so for, for, to get their. To get their ideas, get their interview. I mean. To see where they're at.
I don't understand. Looking for perspective, is that what you're looking for? Like all of the staff are even more than half.
Correct.
Okay.
Good turn.
What about um? I mean, I mean, we're basically looking at. And, and, and employee, an employer hire situation. Um. I don't know. How that's gone in the past, in particular with a fire chief, if like the entire board. Would sit in on interviews or if there would be a. A committee, like a hiring committee established, like you would when you're gonna hire a pastor to church. There's usually a pastor parish committee. Um, but I think obviously we need to move expeditiously on this and I think the first step would be to have somebody. Committee or somebody sit down with whoever's interested. And have conversation with them. And then we have to be prepared once this goes out in, you know. Advertised to be able to hold interviews. I mean, it's. We're middle of September and if you're out by the thirty-first, that does not give much time for a robust hiring process.
The only thing we have to be careful of rather than the private sector is a quarant, so we're gonna, we'll only have two people on the board at the same time.
Or we could, could we do it in a special meeting format?
Well, you can let them do the screening.
Who does the screening?
The two members of the board will do a screening. And that way they'll find out who's interested, who's not interested and. Then that gets done to us and then we can have a special meeting and interview.
So the only thing I'd say is if you're narrowing candidates, even if there's two of you, it's considered a committee that's making a decision. So that in itself would need to be an open meeting. So you can do that, but you should still post it and treat it as a meeting. If you're narrowing the field.
Is that just the narrowing portion or that include the interview portion?
So, kind of. Let me answer it by a couple of examples, right? So if you have two board members and maybe some, you know, fire. Uh, personnel sit down and do interviews. We interview five people. You know, we think uh, board should choose, you know, between these two and maybe do finalist interviews. That would be a decision then that would need to be made. You know, it's, it's really. That committee has become a public body in itself because it's making a decision. So that subcommittee or that committee, whatever you wanna call it, would just need to notice its meetings.
So, so if there was no decision made during that meeting.
And you're not, if you just say, we interviewed, if you say we interviewed and we're just passing all that information off without any.
Correct.
Then, then you can do that without.
Okay.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yep.
Let me make a suggestion.
Yeah.
Just from past experience. You, I would suggest that you, as a board, decide which direction you wanna go. I, I, I know that some of you are pro uh EMS, some are not pro EMS. I would get united in, in the direction and the vision that you want. That way you can stand behind the decisions that you make. For example, or maybe you want all the administrative stuff off your plate and join a fire authority board somewhere. Where, where you are regionalized within another department. I would, I, before starting to spend money on, on ads for a fire chief you may not ever hire. I mean, I would, I would come together as a board and find out what your vision is. Moving forward. Like my brother said, yeah, I'm willing to help whenever I can, but I've got. I, I don't need to do what I'm doing here. I, I, I'm, I'm a full-time chief already. I don't need another one. So, uh, and I'm a paramedic. I can take care of my family. So. I got nothing here. So if you need suggestions for this, as long as you're unified, I'm, I'm, I can help with that.
Okay, good, good.
As a point of reference, uh, I don't know how Farley was placed as chief, but I know. When Farley left. His deputy just took over. Which was Max. When Max left. Dave was put in. Dave, you see that? And so to answer your question, Jason. In the, in the twenty-four years that I've been here, we've never done what you said. I'm just, I don't care one way or the other. I'm just telling you what the history is. I like the idea of having a, a possibility of new blood.
So, so just to be clear, are, are you suggesting that we follow that same historical path or, oh, okay.
I'm just telling you that's what it has been.
Right.
Cause quite frankly, I, we've talked about succession plans before. There is no succession plan right now. And so it's time to, if we're, if we're gonna recreate something. Let's recreate it because I live here. And. I'll still be coming to the meetings and pouring my two cents in. So, you know. And possibly other things down the road, but. We want the best for our citizens. And personally, I want the best for my family, cause I've got two grandbabies gonna be showing up here at the end of the year. I got two baby, two, twin girls showing up. There ain't no way I want them to come into a, into a area that doesn't have fire air nets installed.
There's a benefit to hiring somebody already in the department is that he knows our township, he knows the roads, he knows. The people that he's working with and. I think in the past they went with that type of philosophy. And that's why.
Well, I don't have, I don't have quite any concept about that at all.
Trying to explain why they did it. And I think they were logical at the time.
Yes.
They also did a lot of interviewing and included that person and looked at everything else they had to and.
Well. I, I think, I mean, I see why that. You know, logically and historically usually happens that way. I think as you know better than anybody. We've got quite a bit of history. And um, things to sort out. I mean, Jeremy's points is accurate. You know, I think we've, we've been torn over approach and vision of how we wanna address emergency services. You know, and as, as an employer. When we have a major change, I mean, this is gonna be a major change. And it also presents an opportunity to kind of step back and take a look at the whole picture. Talk to everybody. I mean, I'm, I'm intrigued by the comment you made earlier about morale's low and you canceled your fire department dinner. And I wanna know more about that, you know, so I mean, all that factors into us making a good hire decision, so. Um. I, I think as quickly as we could establish. A, a couple of people to start having conversations and be prepared. Whoever it is, internally or externally, we should do that.
Uh, yeah, yeah, I, I think so.
Well, if we were gonna change. The whole way it works. If we're gonna merge with somebody, if we're gonna do something, this is the time to do it. You know, we. They, you know, we can't afford a new fire truck. Do we look, you know? Do we just start looking at plan B? If we're gonna do something, we need to do it. This is the time to do it, is what I.
Probably need to walk and chew gum at the same time. We really need a special meeting to discuss.
Correct.
Emergency services as a whole.
Yeah.
Future forward and also probably establish a subcommittee to start taking. Uh, interviews.
Choose a direction.
Who wants to be on it?
And, and do that. So Jeremy, I thought, brought up a perfect point, so. Well, I'll help.
I have, I have no problem helping. But if you want, one of the girls I married probably.
Um, those are young women. And that girls.
Did I call them girl? Well, I, I, I need to, what's your symbol?
Just for, just to clarify my line, Laura, if there were three of us. Whoever the three are on the board and, and we met just to get information, but no decisions were made and it was.
That would be a meeting.
Maybe you should still have that as a special meeting.
Oh, yeah, I know, but I mean. We would bring that to the board to have a special meeting to make decisions.
No, you've got three of you meeting, you should do it.
Okay. Alright.
Uh, we could, you know, we could call a special meeting anyways and if just two people show up, two people show up, but you're covered with a special meeting.
Exactly. Just have it treated like a workshop.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, well. We'll figure that out. We'll, we'll get with you, J C. I think if we're interviewing people. One of you with us would probably be very beneficial.
Whenever you are.
So. Sorry.
This isn't a hundred percent clear to me yet. I, I have a couple more questions for you, so. Uh. In the route of a special meeting to conduct interviews. Anybody can come to a special meeting. So are we, are we conducting an open interview? And if so, would it be one at a time? Like.
So, yeah, um. So, yeah, um.
I'm an employer, and I would never have an interview with multiple interviews there in the same.
Right, so that's kind of the downside of having it like that, but on the flip side, you can respectfully ask the other candidates to not be in there. When we get hired as a law firm, they're often at special meetings, and we would have every right to sit in there and listen to them interview the other law firms, but we we don't, right? You would just say, it's technically an open meeting, but you know, respectfully, we would ask the other candidates to wait.
It sounds like first we need to decide which direction we wanna.
I was gonna say, but first, the other special meeting idea there is. You all just having a special meeting to figure out what direction you're going in altogether before you start.
Yeah, we need to get that on the books stat then.
Yeah.
Anybody wanna propose a date?
You wanna do it before the end of the month?
I would.
Probably the sooner the better.
Well, I'm tied up to twenty second, third, and fourth.
Eighteen hours for a special meeting.
Is there any time where you're available during the day, Jason, or is it always gonna have to be an evening?
Um, I I could be available during the day if I have some lead time on it, so yes.
If we did it like nine in the morning, so you could.
Sure.
Go to work afterwards.
Um, late till later half of the week is usually better, Mondays are no good in the morning for sure, but.
Anytime after the twenty-fourth, I'm I'm free.
Except the twenty-seven.
Oh.
My mom.
Oh, twenty-seventh.
After the, after the twenty-fourth, you said?
Twenty-fourth was the first year you went at my house, I probably oughta be there.
How about the twenty-fifth at nine AM then? I make up, do I need a motion?
Doesn't hurt.
Alright. Uh, I make a motion that we hold a special meeting on Thursday, September twenty-fifth at nine AM to discuss. The future plans for emergency services in Columbia Township. Please.
Jason made a motion, Gary seconded it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ice carry.
Sorry.
Sorry, do you need to attend that or not?
Yeah, I think so.
Sorry, you got that?
And then at that meeting, we could discuss also the strategy of whether we wanna pursue. Subcommittee do interviews separately, bring those recommendations to board, or hold a special meeting, okay?
Yeah, so just put in your uh, notice of public hearing, kind of broadly, most different topics that are going to be discussed, so kind of the. Future plans for fire emergency services, including but not limited to.
Yeah, like a normal special meeting.
Yeah, yeah, as good as you can get it within that topic to cover it.
Something about hiring process.
Yeah, hiring process.
The H three is uh. Your chain chains. Sarza will be leaving the Columbia Township Emergency Services, is there a date that she's leaving or she already left? So there's no action for us on that.
I just, that's FYI.
You're gonna remove her, okay, Cara's gonna take her out of our payroll type, so. Uh, you're gonna consider the hiring of Jared Wellman with a start date of.
Now, today. He's he's ready to go.
Do you have paperwork on him?
Jared Wellman, uh, I I've got that information, I forgot to bring it tonight, uh, it's in my house. So Jared is a firefighter from Jeremy and an EMT from me. But he's a firefighter EMT. Skylar is also a firefighter EMT, or a fighter from Jeremy EMT community, so they they have higher qualifications than what we require that the companies are writing.
And they have no problem living in the areas, though, or they're in there.
Nothing about, we have nothing in our policies about living in the area. These these are, these men are coming to me to cover EMS shifts that we have done.
And how, what's their, what's their uh? Longevity, what's, how, what's their status as far as?
What's your longevity? Well, it's, it's my understanding is you can't discriminate people based on uh. Uh, possibility of movement or anything else, so.
No, no, I didn't mean that, I meant, how long have they been in the fire?
Well, if they, okay, that's fair, that's a fair question, they are, they're young, they're nineteen.
So they haven't been in.
Eighteen is when you're.
Eighteen is when you're required by law, is when we can, as by law, do that.
It'll be about less than a year.
So if if I'm not mistaken, they're both from families that are in involved in fire EMS. Jared actually has already worked for a year with the Department of the South, uh, it's a bigger department towards Illinois. And Skylar, uh, they're both top of my class, I don't know what Jeremy's, but I. It would only stand to reason if they were top of mine, they were top of his. The younglings are gonna cycle in and out. They're trying to, they're trying to find their way, they're trying to understand things.
Which doesn't cost us, though, I mean, did we have to?
Cost us nothing.
It does, we don't pay for.
No, because we we have all of the equipment there, and we just, so like. My equipment, if mine's expired, so, but if my, if my equipment was not expired, and there was another fat guy that joined, he gets my equipment. You don't have to buy new equipment, it's there until it expires, and then you have to buy new stuff. So, uh.
I just remember hearing there was like a physical or something, but we don't have that.
There's a physical every single year, and that's that's required just to be a human being, and in service, so, I mean. We're talking about um, to to comfortably get somebody moving. That what we currently have is basically start working. When it's time for physicals once a year, we'll roll in on that, which is already in there. Uh, we don't pay any more or less because of how many people there, just show up and there it is, and then, um, yeah.
That's good to know.
I mean, if if I had fifteen new people that started, yeah, we'd have a problem. Because we wouldn't have uh, legal gear for them, and so they, we couldn't put that many up. But we have enough uh, certified sets of equipment to put these boys in and still have extras. Extra sets of equipment.
How much time you need to file the paperwork?
But he said that it was like two thousand dollars, first we hired, we're physical, so I didn't know where that came from, okay. I'm just.
Tonight lights came on. The breaker tripped again.
The what?
The breaker tripped again, I see they came on.
Well, you said you were gonna call them, weren't you?
I did call them, I called them again today and asked if they got it fixed, and I didn't get, and then I get an answer from them.
So can I make a motion?
Yeah.
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we hire Jared Wellman with a start date of nine sixteen.
Yep.
Sixteen.
Twenty twenty-five. I second.
Mary, Cara, roll call, Mary?
Yes.
Cara?
Yeah.
Gary?
Yes.
Ken, yes, Jason?
Yes.
You're gonna make the same motion for the next one?
Make a motion that we hire Skylar Esperini. As a start date of nine sixteen twenty-five.
Got a second?
Sure, I'll second.
Cara seconded. Mary?
Yes.
Cara? Gary?
Yeah.
Ken? Jason?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, I forgot to tell you, we did have, uh, Med Control is always the same day as your guys' stuff. For those who don't know, Med Control is a a board that my brother and I sit on that controls all emergency medicine in the county. So that's something that we do in the day, something else that we do. And Med Control was advised today that Papa Kiwa. The QR team that is a free team that runs so many calls has said. Done at the end of the month.
Is that, is that John Redmond?
Yeah, Johnson. And so there's that. I will also say that sometimes, and this has nothing to do with Paul Paul, so that's, that's a statement, there's another statement I'd like to make now, totally separate. That sometimes, when you get something for free, you're going to get exactly what you're paying for. Uh, and there is a company out there that will tell you that they're the best in the world, and they've been extra money years of this, that, and the other thing. Uh, highly cautioned against any private QR team coming in, it's a huge cautionary tale. And if you would like me to go further, I can, but all I will say is that's an extremely bad idea, and Citizen Robertson will be in opposition to that.
Are they out soliciting right now?
Uh, they're gonna be, they're hooking up from the south.
Well, we can, we can talk about that.
I would like everybody to hear that, because free is not necessarily better.
It's QR, Steve.
QR's quick response, it's 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 our, it's our EMS stuff. And I did talk to John Pingster today, and he was very frustrated that I was leaving, because he's like, I told the board that, yeah. We need to have a QR team there to 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 fill the gap. It's a John O' type. Um, so John is willing to help, just ask him. But uh, help does not mean you're, we're gonna get our own ambulance. I mean, my brother presented many different ways that we could get our own ambulance over the years, but it is not cheap. But when you go with a private service, you're gonna get what you get, and you can't have a fit. So.
John is upset about that, but we pay a hundred thousand dollars to the ambulance service, and we're paying fifty thousand dollars for a quick response.
You pay, you pay taxes.
Our taxpayers are paying that.
To have your accountant, correct, not to jump.
So John is happy that we have that, is there any way that they can subsidize our quick response?
They are, they are trying to keep their nose apart because they work off of Medicare or Medicaid, and. There's a lot of calls across the state that, um. They don't get paid for, but they're required by law to answer up to. If 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 the nine-one-one dispatch, they're required to go up to it. That's everybody without insurance, that's everybody that calls for a reason not needing an ambulance, it's like. And this, this is an honest-to-goodness call that I was on years ago, there's a ladybug in my ear. A ladybug in my ear was one of my calls, I stubbed my toe, not joking, stubbed my toe, what should I do? Would you, yeah, now we're going back in time, you know, I need you to brush my teeth for me. I need you to put me on the toilet, I need you to wipe my butt, all things that are not EMS. Were required by law if someone does nine-one-one to go. Just the same way as the hospitals required to service all those people, and all the hospitals in the area, every single one. Not only in this county, but in in the state are overwhelmed with this malarkey calls. Code black, in case you didn't know, is when they're on divergent, right divergence, which means you can walk in. Like, like my daughter-in-law did, and five hours later. You get saved. So we as a society have gotta say, like I stated before, enough's enough. Listen to the people that have the experience and the knowledge. Unless as a society come to an agreement, we're gonna do this, or we're gonna do that. So you can be mad all you want, but the truth of it is, yes, in the entire Van Buren County, we pay a millage for ambulance, to have an ambulance here. That's a true statement, but we don't pay for life.
But life is who's who.
But life is who we contract with to come back us up, absolutely.
And they're, they, their contractors are Bloomingdale. They've kind of bloomed it out.
Hundred percent.
They don't have a quick response, so I just feel, I feel like they're like, oh, we're using your quick response, we're counting on it, but. Nobody subsidizing you guys for it, our taxpayers, our tax.
That's absolutely true, and when John, um, John, uh. Just plain name because I'm, I'm.
I'm St. Peter.
No, Redmond neighbor. Chief John from Bloomingdale called us to back him up on that Amish ass. He didn't care, he did not care that there's budget wars or war grounds. There was blood, guns, hell, death, and destruction, he wanted backup.
I, yeah.
That's what we showed up to do.
Chris, Chris or don't, yeah, and that was what, I mean, on the thing they put traffic control, I'm like, what are you kidding?
That, that's what the initial thing was, but regardless of of the starting point, like, the endpoint is. We live in a society that that abuses the nine-one-one system. Across the board. So to say that we already pay taxes on that is a very true statement, or no doubt that's true statement. But I'm here to tell you that, yes, we pay, we pay for ambulance. This is not much an ambulance, a single ambulance costs. We as a county pay this much for an ambulance, and ambulance. This is how much an ambulance costs. Okay, now you can, you can say, well, I already paid for that, but, you know, I paid for three sheets of a piece of toilet paper, then, I don't know. I'm I'm just telling you. A is not adding to be correct, and to keep sounding the drum that we are paying taxes already, that's a true statement. But it it far out matches what is needed to do each other.
I'm just gonna go on record to say, I've been collecting taxes.
Sure.
And I have had more than a dozen people pay me. Thirty-one dollars, forty-two dollars, they don't have the money for a tax increase, and yet we are paying someone to be a quick response. And shouldn't they be frustrated that they're getting called to white butts and to pick people off the floor, and there are emergencies? So.
The worst thing of it is, is when you're on one of those white butt calls, and somebody goes down with a CPR needle. You're on a white butt call. But none.
As a taxpayer, there's nothing we can do about them.
Not one, you can complain about it all you want, but there's not one thing you can do until you as a society say. That's enough, I'm gonna go help my neighbor, as opposed to letting them call nine-one-one. I am gonna go visit my neighbor on Mondays and see if they need him. And if they do, I'm gonna help them out. I mean, that's where we're at. I I hear you, I agree with you, I don't wanna pay more taxes. But I also don't want to live in a society that doesn't care for each other. So we've gotta make a decision about what we care about less. I don't know. It's a great, it's a great conundrum to have, I guess, cause that means we're a free society and not a social society. What? Do you'd like to talk about business of EMS? Well, private and municipal. I'm willing to sit down and have that conversation. He was career, career fire, fire EMS, I remember all EMS billing, all fire billing, and all that stuff.
Well, I think we've taken enough time for it now, because of the whole agenda, but we we definitely, as a board, need to go to the township or the county and say, okay.
Appreciate all your input.
With ours, but.
Okay, moving on.
I think we're on uh, H six, and I think we oughta move that to along with that special meeting, and that's uh. To discuss the uh, next year emergency service budget in light of the fire chief resignation.
Yeah, I think we should.
Because that's gonna be tied to where we are with budget and what we need to do, and.
Yeah.
Alright, I'll get with J C beforehand to see if he's got an idea what the real numbers uh, need to be for fire chief and realistically, you know.
We should not change the budget at all. We, as a township, cannot afford a change in the budget. What we have is what we have, now we gotta figure out how to make that work. So, so the budget is what the budget is.
Yeah.
Of, I mean, we can't change that. I am not in favor of raising taxes at all, so what I, what I'm trying to tell you is, the budget's gotta be the budget. Now we've gotta figure out what is our vision with it, so, cause without a vision, people perish. Without a vision, people perish. Robert twenty-nine eighteen, just so you know. So, put that in your little books and think about, what's our vision? Again, one side of the other.
I guess what I'm trying to tell you is, is that we can go out and try to get more mileage in the uh, August election next year.
These, uh, the taxpayers of Columbia Township cannot afford higher taxes, can, we are maxed.
Can they afford not to have fire and ambulance?
Oh, okay, okay, this.
Should be, that should be discussed in a special.
One last thing to put on your plate for your services, the roof on station two is falling apart. Enough said, bye. It's twenty-one years old.
Hey.
Let's move on.
Move number seven. Uh, consider demolishing the shed at station one and obtaining a new shed for station two.
What do you keep in there, does that have to be done now?
Does anything have to be done, no, the answer is no, should the shed go, absolutely it should go, bare minimum, it's got, that's gotta go away.
Do you have a price on a new shed?
Well, Gary's, what was Gary's? I want one, I want a little bit bigger than Gary's got, Gary's already done all the work, I just want one of what he's got. I want one of, I want a little bit bigger than Gary's got. Gary's already done all the work. I just want one of what he's got. How much was yours?
Forty-seven hundred dollars to maybe six thousand dollars for a little bigger one.
Cause I've got, there's six thousand dollars in the line item for, uh, computers to put in the trucks, which we already decided we're not doing. So there's six thousand dollars in the budget that's already been allocated and appropriate. So all we need is a budget amendment to move that. And there you go.
So we have to spend it though? I mean, if we don't.
You don't have to spend it. I'm, I, but what I'm saying is, the question was gonna come up, where are you gonna fund this from? That was giving my suggestion. If we decide, no, we don't need a shed, okay, fine. I'm just telling you, Gary's already done all the work. There's no reason to redo the work.
Right. We have that done now.
Uh, well, we could still tear it down if there's nothing in there that's, I mean, if you're not using it for anything except hold air.
There's stuff in there. We can move it to bay into, into the end. I'm telling you, the building itself is not.
Yeah, yeah.
Usable.
Yeah. I know.
I'm telling you what you, I'm, I'm recording.
What do we want to do with that?
Maybe we ought to send that over to the special meeting they're gonna have too regarding the chief and for emergency services. That's part of it.
The bill, is the building dangerous? Is the shed dangerous?
Only if somebody goes in it. Wait. All right, seriously, it, it, it goes with just cleaning up the area. Can it sit there until it, yeah? You'd actually have to go to the building, force your way in to get hurt. So no, it's not gonna hurt you. It could sit there for a couple more years, but there'll be no big deal. I was just following the lead of like cleaning up our stuff. I have no agenda other than I wanna clean up stuff like you guys would want.
Do that to the special meeting. Okay. That's gonna go on the special meeting too. Now we're in the unfinished business. And this is the time that we're gonna consider, uh, Vesper's pretty much request for the township board to make a decision. Whether they stay with us and work with us on our ordinance or if they go to the state of Michigan to, uh, obtain a permit from the Michigan Public Service Commission. Did I say that right?
M P S C, yes.
Open for discussion. Jason?
I have a question, uh, on this, uh, response from Vesper on the workable ordinance that's in here. This has already been sent to the PC and back to us. And the revisions are in there. I didn't see any red lines or anything. I read through the whole thing. Uh, there's some questions that they can't answer, obviously, because the state hasn't made their mind up yet. But I don't know if anybody's had any other conversations with Rich. Uh, after we've gotten this, now maybe Jason, maybe you have, or maybe you have Ken or.
I, I understand that we would have to revise the, of the work of the ordinance to meet some of the criteria that they, they couldn't live with.
Yeah. Um, I do have a copy of the current, uh, I, I guess redlined version of the draft, which, um, started on our end with our attorney. It got, kinda got put on hold when we went through those other iterations and the lawsuit and all that, but then, um, Vesper sent it back with, um, red line suggestions on things to make this workable for them and us. We did send it to Laura, um, and where this currently sits is that Laura has advised that the revisions proposed are not material enough for us to need to go back through the process. So we could, um, we could choose to adopt this with their red line suggestions or propose alternatives to their red line suggestions. But I think that really puts us at kind of a crossroads point right now is knowing that we need to make the decision next month at the latest. Because we know Vesper will then pursue permitting through the state. I think that because there's still, and Laura, please weigh in on this, but because there's still could be a little bit of work going back and forth on this. And or potential legal counsel, I think we sort of need to make a preliminary decision as a board. Do we wanna continue even entertaining the idea of a workable? Because if we don't, it's kind of a waste of time. I don't think we need to vote on adopting the workable at this point, but.
But I think this board needs to decide if it wants, you know, not just me to put in the work, but Vesper to put in work, you know, to finalize this for October, or if, if the board doesn't answer, if a majority of the board does not want to go the workable ordinance route and rather they go to the state, then I think you're better suited to decide that tonight rather than spend money on me that you don't need to. And I don't think you wanna wait till next month to decide that because then if you do wanna go forward, you, we've gotta sit and go through all these red lines and, you know, figure out how to make it a clean version in the last minute.
This appears, the red lines in here. From what I'm just scanning real briefly. Sounds like pretty much what they have, or what's in the packet. Some of these, some of these questions are redundant. Answer, asked a little different way, but answer's the same.
Are you referring to the, the Q and A document that they provided? Or I, I don't know what you mean.
The one that's in this packet, an H one, an H one.
I won?
Oh, excuse, no. Or, uh, no.
I don't think it's any.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yeah, I won.
Page one eight, I'm, I'm looking at the online packet. Page one eighteen of one fifty is the Q and A. I don't see the workable ordinance at your actual.
It's not, it's not. I, I brought this because I, I wa, it was not clear to me if wherever we had left off before, because so much time has elapsed, I don't remember if you guys had this or not.
No, I want is their, their response.
To the questions that were asked at the open house. Yes, right.
But not the workable.
Not, not the work.
It's not the work.
Itself, no. So maybe, maybe I wasn't clear. I, I apologize. But some of the things that are in here were addressed in their response.
That might be because the workable ordinance draft that I think Jason handed out dates back before the August public session.
Correct. And, and I can tell you, I, I won't, I won't say this with any, like, um, legal expertise, but when this was sent back, Rich did say that I, I believe most of the red line suggestions that they put in relate to the timing on the permitting process. There were some things that were in the original draft in terms of requirements for permitting that, um, I guess from a chronological standpoint, don't make sense to have until they receive a permit. They would be required to do them anyways by state law, but, um, for us to require them to do it before they actually received a permit doesn't make sense. So they're basically just saying some of these are out of order. And that's why we're suggesting that they are worded the way they are differently. Again, that's not.
I think, I think that's a fair.
Is that fair?
Yeah, and some of that's reflected, not just in the red lines, but, and I don't know if you can see the comments on the printout or not. I'm looking at the electronic copy. They have a lot of kind of comments, uh, in the margins that say things, you know, to be provided after approval, but before the project can operate for a number of those items. So where we had it drafted that they had to provide these things at the application stage, they're saying, no, like basically the approval will be conditioned on us. So getting those before we're allowed to operate. It's a kind of saying the same thing there. And there are a couple other, I mean, they, they, uh, add residential approved as a zoning district in which battery energy storage systems would be allowed as a special land use. Um, and then some, you know, minor changes to other substantive requirements. But again, I think before the board can talk about whether those changes are acceptable, gotta decide if any workable ordinance is acceptable.
So we should make a motion not to go forward with the workable ordinance and allow Vesper to file with the state of Michigan.
That would be an appropriate motion or stated in the positive motion to, you know, proceed with moving of this workable ordinance to October. You could make the motion either way.
I'll make the motion in the positive way as, uh, but will I have a second?
What?
Wait, 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 let's.
There, yeah.
So.
I need to read that.
Yeah, let's read it. So that'd be a motion to, and I'm not gonna put words in your mouth, I'm not gonna put words in your mouth.
Motion to continue work on the proposed workable ordinance and to hold a vote at the next regular meeting, October twenty-third, twenty twenty-five.
That works.
Yeah. Is that what you meant, Ken?
That's, that's.
So keep on, keep working on it. Bring the ordinance to a vote next month. That's, that's why I understand the motion to be. Is that your intent for?
That's. Yeah, that would, that would work.
It's your motion.
Yeah, that's my motion.
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion? No.
I think it's just logical that we take the time to do that. Whether you like it or not, it's.
Jason?
No, no discussion.
Okay. Uh, my vote is no. Uh, I, uh, I'm, I'm gonna give, uh, a few reasons why, not all my reasons why, but still a few. One is, uh, I don't think we have our emergency services in the proper order to be able to do a response to that. I don't think it, uh, matches up with our master plan or our zoning ordinances where we don't have industrial and agricultural district. I also think the township does not have the technical expertise to, uh, do a project, uh, on Fiftieth Avenue or probably anywhere else. And it's probably better that the state of Michigan take over this project and allow them to go through that process. I don't think there's a guarantee that Eagle will provide any money, grant money to the township. I, uh, looked at the taxes that we would begin. It'll be only the personally, personal property and that will depreciate fifty percent per year. So after nine years, we would be down to about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year for this project. Uh, any financial gains proposed without south of the financial long-term interest of our township. And my final thing is the risk of an accident is greater than a benefit to be achieved by the township. And that's why I made my vote. Mary?
No.
Derek?
Would you vote? I voted yes.
Kara?
No.
Jason?
Yes.
Okay. Were members wanting to make any comment after that?
I would.
Go ahead.
Whether the taxpayers here are aware of it or not, the state law is law. We were put in a position where we had two choices. We either take what the state's gonna ram down our throat with no say so. Or we can try to get the best for the taxpayers that we can with this, uh, mandatory project. We don't have, we don't have an option if it's coming or not. It is coming. Whether you like it or not, it's gonna be here. And I don't think the taxpayers actually understand some of the benefits that would be available to us by having a workable ordinance. Whether you like it or not, we would have a better chance of getting what we would like to have by having a workable ordinance. Uh, we're actually between a rock and a hard spot here. No matter what we do or say is not gonna please everybody. And I think that I'm gonna try to be careful here. I think that most of the taxpayers don't really understand what the alternatives are. I, I really don't think they understand. And as far as risks concerned, there's risks with everything. And you cannot prevent every risk. It's impossible. Uh, to use what JC was saying earlier. And Jeremy's gone, but and in my line of business before thirty-three years, you see the worst of the worst. And the problem is that we're not notified until it happens. Otherwise, who could prevent it? But we can. Uh, so I guess, I guess the only thing to get, can contend with here is which side of this rock do we wanna be on? I have personal views and I also work for you people, the taxpayers. You're my boss. And depending on how this turns out, it's either gonna be for you people or it's gonna be what the board decides. And we have to live with each one of those choices. And whatever that choice is, and this is for both sides, I don't wanna hear any complaining out of anybody's mouths. So I'm saying, and it's nothing personal for you people or for the board. Uh, it's just we're, we're, we're pushed into, uh, form is what we actually are. I'm done.
I just wanna clarify, since we voted not to vote on the workable ordinance that we are now going, they can go to the state. And the other thing, Gary, I respectfully disagree with you, um, we spent ten thousand dollars to join a lawsuit to keep this out of our, out of our township. And I believe, and I respect your opinion, but I believe our citizens have said, we do not want this. So I personally do not wanna make it easier for them to come in. Whether it's easy or not, then they may come in with the state. But it's not gonna be because we didn't try.
I, I don't agree. I don't disagree with you at all. I, I don't disagree with you at all. That's why I said we're between a rock and a hard spot here.
Okay.
We have a gentleman, I don't know.
We're not.
Well, you, this is, this isn't a time for public comment. If you could.
We will, yeah.
At the end, we will have a, that's. Otherwise, we can revise our agenda if you want to let somebody.
Okay, um, I'll, I'd like to say something.
Go ahead, Jason.
If, if we're kinda going down the line, um, it obviously goes without saying that this project, um, potential project in our township is and was a controversial issue. Um, I think it's also fair to say that it's generated some pretty strong emotions and, and dare I say even angry rhetoric. Especially in recent months, um. I've heard it suggested that board members took bribes from Vesper. Um, I've heard threats of recall. Um, which, you know. Citizens are entitled to their own opinions, I guess. We've tried to provide as much information as possible. In many different formats. But there's still. A lot of people in our township just catching up on this issue that we've been wrestling with for two years. And a lot of that's due to public engagement. So we can't do a lot about that, but, um. I guess I just want to maybe be clear. On why I voted the way I did, um. And maybe give a little bit of historical context on this because. I agree with Gary. I believe this is coming whether anybody wants it or not. So that point's kind of irrelevant, kind of moot, um. P A two thirty three was passed in November twenty twenty three, went into effect November twenty twenty four. Basically gave the state of Michigan an avenue to bypass the authority of ordinances and local government to permit renewable energy. Projects anywhere in the state. And, and. Local governing bodies lost the ability to have any say in that. And. You know, nearly two years ago when we took this up, we were given three choices. One, do nothing. And let it be permitted through the state. Two, adopt a C R E O, which is a, um. Um, a state-driven ordinance process that really is kind of closer to letting them, you know, run the permit process. Uh, it's a compatible renewable energy ordinance. Or three, adopt a workable ordinance, which involves our township working directly with a developer. To pursue a project that is. As mutually beneficial as possible and, um. But really those three choices were irrelevant because P A two thirty three paved the way for projects like this to come. To pass in any township in Michigan. So that's just kind of the reality, um. This is gonna be kind of in line of what Karen said. I, I completely understand the arguments for opposing the project. But anger at Vesper seems misplaced to me. We live in a free market economy. They're simply lawfully pursuing a legal business opportunity. Um, in my opinion, they've exercised, um. A lot of patience with us as we've tried to wrestle with this process that they didn't necessarily have to. Um, I think anger at the board's also misplaced, but, um. I already talked about the whole accusation of bribes, but. We were all placed in a difficult decision. A position really to make a decision between throwing caution to the wind and, and standing aside and letting permitting go through the state or. Um, risking the appearance of fully supporting a project that obviously had a lot of public opposition to it, um. By drafting a workable ordinance that at least had the potential to give our township additional benefits, both financially and. With a better ordinance than we're gonna get through the state. Um. I'm a little discouraged that. The board gave direction some time ago for us to pursue a workable ordinance that went through the planning commission. We did all that and I mean, I get, everybody gets to change their mind, but. I feel like it makes us look a little bad that we flip flopped on that issue because at one point this board did think a workable ordinance was the best, best path forward. Um. And, uh. I kind of said it this way all along. It's like. If this is coming anyways, um, I believed even though. There was verbal opposition to this, I also heard verbal support of it. It's impossible to know what, how the whole township would have voted, voted on it. But I believed it was in the best interest of us to try to maximize. The potential benefit since we're getting it no matter what. And that's why I was in favor of a workable ordinance, but. Uh, we're done now. It's, uh. Vesper's listening to this, this meeting, so they know what we're doing and they're going through the state, so. Is what it is.
So Kara, you have anything?
No.
Oh. I too consider action to be taken regarding short-term rentals. Uh, last month we had a moratorium proposal. And that got kind of put off to the side, so I guess. Uh, should we be notifying the short-term rentals that it's not a permitted use? Should be, be working forward with a ordinance? I need some direction from the board. Of what steps you'd like me to take to. Deal with this situation. Any comments for me?
Well, I've been with some thought and I think that maybe a moratorium at this point in time would be wise to do. That would give us time to review things and look at them a little bit closer. Uh. Also, uh. Contact our attorney again to get their input.
I'm here. You got, you got me to speak to this a little bit, but that, I know I wasn't at the right.
Yeah, no, please do.
Yeah, um, uh, but. Wasn't last regular meeting, so I was at your special meeting and I thought you'd get sick of me two nights in a row, um, but yeah, I, I got some. Um, questions, I think from Kate on why would there be a moratorium if it's not, it's already not allowed? And it's really. A twofold answer. One, the township got this P U D application for a project that was really based on short-term rentals. So obviously. It would put a stop to receiving any, uh, or processing any applications like that. And make it clear that it's not permitted because certainly there are likely people who did not know that it was not allowed, that. It, it means all the way it is, single family and under the, the case law, it's our opinion that short-term rentals are not permitted in those residential districts. So a moratorium. Puts at least a stop to any applications or processing of applications or approvals for short-term rental uses. Whether that means you're going to take enforcement action is a different question. So just because you impose a moratorium. Doesn't mean you're going to send the police out to weekend renters, you know, and, and start shutting down short-term rentals. It gives the township some time and a pause to decide what you want to do as a policy matter. Do you want to allow short-term rentals? In a particular area, perhaps with the registration system so that, uh, you know, what the, there's contact information, things like that, right? Like what we often deal with and, and I don't know if the township gets complaints about rowdy, short-term renters at all. Some communities do. Okay.
We're on and off.
On and off. Um, I have another community where it was. Last year, a hugely hot topic, um, on a lake, you know, wild parties. Breaking laws, things like that. And so the registration process allowed the city to have, you know, immediate contact information for the owner of the property. Um, required certain rules to be communicated to renters, things like that. So that's certainly an option as well. Um, but so I still, I still stand by the moratorium recommendation. It's up to you again. Um, I don't believe they're permitted currently, but what enforcement action you take while you're deciding whether to allow them. Is a different question because you might. Might decide to allow them where they're currently existing. So it may not be a good use of taxpayer money to go out and take enforcement action. That clear as mud? It just comes down to much like with the last kind of kind of. What do you want to do with this? You might not know that right now and that's kind of. The benefit of the moratorium.
Hey, as the chair of the P C, um. I know you and I had a few conversations about the difference, um. Has the planning commission had any further discussion about this? I, I'm sorry, I wasn't able to read your minutes.
No, we have not.
Um. I know, I, I think. You and I had some conversation about like. The difference of a moratorium and a notice and benefits of both and drawbacks of both. I just was curious. From a planning commission standpoint, have you had any opinions on this?
This is my opinion, not the planning commission as a retired lawyer, not practicing, so I'm not giving legal advice, um, but I. Uh, I, I think I, I'm. In general, not in favor of the board taking an action that opens them to potential lawsuits. And I'm thinking if I'm a short-term. Owner on Sad Lake and I've been renting my place out for ten years. I just don't agree. I think I, I would have a case to make that you don't. You don't have a moratorium. You don't, it's not a lead to. Uh, do the short-term owners. Why? Because when the township pet zone. The Sad Lake area and all the lakes, you called it R two and that was your chance to. Accept certain uses, which you didn't. In fact, our zoning ordinances have been changed five or six times. Since they were originally in it. So, so if I got a house in Sad Lake. And I've been, and, and, and you passed an ordinance calling it residential and you didn't take out my right to short-term rental and I've been short-term renting all along, ten years, twenty years, I. I have an argument. That I think is a solid argument to a court that says. They just can't come and stop me. They've been allowing me to do it and if they didn't want me to do it, they would have changed their ordinance. I think the P D application, the glam being is a completely different issue. We prevailed and I'm at not because. There's a moratorium and the township, but because about four separate issues that. That falls on its face, on about four different separate issues. Whether we would have had a moratorium or not, would have just been maybe helped our argument, but it, it didn't. It didn't keep us from winning that application. So my worry, if I'm being clear. Is that if you put a moratorium on, you're gonna scare. Current short-term owners that are currently renting out and have been for years and I think. Open yourself up to lawsuits and I really would hate to see this township spending more money on lawsuits that we really. Can't afford to be in. But I do think a notice is the way to go because you're saying. We've got this issue, uh, we're gonna take care of it and I think you need to move through it quickly and get it done and work with people, but to scare them and. Take, tell them there's a moratorium is gonna raise questions of can I run it out next year? I mean, you know that they're going through that right now and I do think it puts you at legal risk. That's, that's really it. So I would, I don't want to argue with you, Kate. Yeah, I know, I don't want to argue with you either. Yeah, I don't either. But, but just because this has been recorded and broadcasted, people who may be in that position, I want to make two things clear. Yeah. One is that a zoning ordinance doesn't have to prohibit everything. It only allows what is permitted. So we don't have to explicitly prohibit short-term rentals for them to not be allowed. We would have to explicitly. Allow them and this, I think the room versus Spring Lake Township case is directly on point. I think the township's ordinance is nearly identical to it. So if there were a challenge, I don't think would be well-founded. That said, it is your policy decision. It is your. You know, appetite for perceived risk. It, it really, I think, though comes to, just like the last issue. Where is this going to go? Because if you are going to say we're not allowing short-term rentals. Then you're gonna have that, you know. Quote unquote fight, although again, I think the township's in a strong position. You're going to have that at some point.
But, but if there was a, an ordinance adopted for short-term rentals. That ordinance could stipulate like a timeframe. Uh. For, for renting or, or. So many. Or the owner, owners. Relatives or something. I mean, couldn't, couldn't you?
So often they might be, you know, they could be, uh, a minimum of a certain number of days, maximum, things like that, um. Again, contact information is usually a big part of it, things that help the township protect if there are complaints and issues, um. So it's more that, that, I mean, I wouldn't say you're going right to relatives. That's generally not what. No, no, that's okay, but just. Could regulate it. You could talk about, you know, what months it's allowed, whatever. That you need natural rational basis for protecting the public health, safety and welfare, which is largely going to be, you know, what kind of complaints are you getting? And how can we regulate in a way that addresses those complaints? It might just be, you know, requiring that, um, the noise ordinance be posted or communicated to renters, you know, things like that, so that people coming in know what their rules of the township are as well. To be clear, I'm not suggesting you prohibit or permit short-term rentals. That's entirely your decision. As of now, the state has not taken that away. Although they keep flirting with it in different legislative sections.
Um. Sorry, maybe this was mentioned, is the moratorium a blanket moratorium or a moratorium on new? Short-term rentals moving forward.
Let me pull up the actual language. So is it, is it in?
Uh, it was in last month.
Yeah, let me, let me pull it up, okay.
I mean, I think.
You'll say approvals or permits for short-term rentals, which we didn't grant anybody approval or permit for a short-term rental. We never, you know, we never have. Uh, let me pull that up. So you got there faster than.
It's amazing how it's.
The ordinance should have attached. There you go.
So it'd be a moratorium on the issuance of any and all permits, licenses or approvals. For any property subjects who are under the jurisdiction of the township for the establishment of short-term rentals. So it doesn't say anything about shutting down existing short-term rentals. I understand the point that if you have a short-term rental. This would give you concern and frankly, you know, perhaps it should to the extent that they're not currently permitted in the township. If you don't want to take this step and just keep the status quo. You can do that as well. This just makes it clear that the township is considering regulations for this. And if somebody comes to say, I want to have a short-term rental, you know, the answer is going to be, no, we can't give you approval for that because it's not allowed right now. And it hasn't been, even though it's been operating.
Yeah, I remember this language now. I remember why, why I think it's confusing because it's, it, it discusses the issuance of permits, licenses and approvals, which we don't currently do anyways.
Right.
None of the short-term rentals operating our township. Came for a permit. So we're saying we're putting a moratorium on permits, but we don't do them anyways.
So, so they came, whether it's for P U D or otherwise, we would, and they said, can I have a short-term rental? I want to apply for site plan approval for a short-term rental. Say we can't even touch this because we're considering it. This is not an enforcement ordinance. This is not a directive that says we're going to go shut down. Currently operating short-term rentals.
But just like, um. None of the current short-term rentals had to apply for a permit. If somebody was gonna do it, they're just gonna come and do a building permit and then, and we are gonna know that it's a short-term rental, like we did on any of them.
That's right.
Yeah, so.
That's right, because this isn't, again, this isn't the enforcement part of it.
Moratorium is just, I, I. The word speaks to me of like, we're stopping all of it.
And it's really saying, we are not going to less approve, grant a permit for, say it's okay. If you're gonna do it illegally, you're gonna do it illegally and we might or might not take enforcement action.
Yeah.
So what's the future of this? Like, are we sending it to the planning commission to start?
Well, this is the township where the.
So.
So we, we will write it. I think I've already got a draft.
More set the moratorium, just put it in the.
The one moratorium just gets us six months to get the draft.
Amendments to the zoning ordinance would go to bank, sure, but the moratorium.
What I'm working on in the draft is, uh, I'm looking at. I need to go out and. Have a small little talk with a, a bunch of, uh, people that do have. Short-term rentals and then I need to talk to a, a group that are sitting next to them and what they have. And then try to get something in the middle ground to be able to come up with something. What I'm hearing so far is that the ones that do have short-term rentals are agreeable to. Do a lot of things to keep it. And one of the things that they're talking about. We'd like to give the, our neighbors our phone number and a backup phone number so that when they have a problem, they call us and we deal with it. And then if we don't deal with it, then you can call the township, somebody in the township and file a complaint and there'd be a fee for it. For having, having us get involved in between it, or them not answering. But there's, there's all other stuff that can happen. What, what about if you only got twenty-five feet of lake and. Your neigh- neighbor had twenty-five feet of lake and you got fifteen people and they're blocking your vibrant rights and not doing that, maybe they shouldn't have fifteen people there.
And they could lose their approval then. If you do have a registration or permitting process. You know, however, it means three strikes, you're out, but you know, I'm not suggesting that language, but. The idea of, if you don't follow the rules, if your renters don't follow the rules chronically, you will lose the privilege of having a short-term rental.
Uh, another thing they ask for is that, that give us the list of rules and we'll post, post them in our, our rental and let them know what the fees are if they. They violate that rule.
Right, because people.
One would be noise and other things like that.
So again. Do this or don't do this. I don't, you know. You can choose what you want to do from a policy perspective. We offer options, kind of a, you know, a. Options, kind of a, you know, if they have options, this is one that is very common when you are going to be regulated in the area. Like, I don't know if the, can't remember enough, you guys have one for wind and solar and battery, right, where they weren't necessarily allowed either, but there's still that. Pause, so that you're not getting people coming in trying to get approval for things, so. Both up to you, this is an option that we thought made sense, but. You're the decision makers.
Lastly, do we, outside of the. Grandfathered in full side of it. Is there still? Consideration to be had about. A short-term rental being a commercial operation in a residential zone?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
Well, I think our ordinances do say you can't. Run a business in a residential.
You have to change your ordinance to allow these, that's the whole.
Okay, but.
They're not allowed for.
But what Ken's suggesting is. We make that allowable.
Right.
Under certain conditions.
Correct. So you would have an ordinance, amending the zoning ordinance, and it would make. Short-term rentals either, you know. Permitted or special land use in certain districts or in an overlay, whatever you decide to do. And some of the conditions for that would be, you know, this registration process, where they have to get the permit, they have to follow the rules, so. There's a few moving parts to it, but you would be adding it as a land use that is allowed in the township, um, with certain requirements.
And, and what I'm asking you tonight is, tell me the direction you want me to go.
Yeah.
And if you say that there are violations to our zoning ordinance, and we don't have any. But that's fine, that's the direction I'm going to go, if you tell me that. We're going to have a moratorium, and we're going to think about this, we'll stop everything for a while. And then at the end of that, we can come back here and you can tell me, we're not going to do any of it. Or you could tell, tell me tonight that we want you to consider going out and getting an ordinance developed for us. That would be something reasonable between both parties, and I will go and. Try to gather all that data for you, and I'll get somebody to take the nice meeting minutes to show what the discussions were, and. Present it to the board, whether they want to do it or not, and if you don't want to do it, then we will be back to, it'll be a violation of our zoning.
And this go, this doesn't go through the planning commission?
The moratorium doesn't, but the amendments would.
Right.
So if you want to, I think Ken's last point there was, you know. Have us put together an ordinance, then that will go to the planning commission, planning commission would have a public hearing on it, would be able to get input. On all of that, and if it is in our, you know, our two, you know, those folks can come. Share their thoughts, um, so that absolutely would go through the planning commission.
But it is a police power ordinance.
The moratorium is, but the zoning ordinance amendments would be. We'd have to amend the zoning ordinance to allow the land.
Yeah, but my, okay, well, um.
The amendment will refer you to the township ordinance.
The other townships that I've talked to from our research. They clearly stated to me that the township board. Wrote the ordinance and passed the ordinance, because it was not a zoning ordinance, it was a police power ordinance for the general welfare and safety. Of the township, that is not a planning commission, there may be some. Changes in the zoning ordinance that need to take place, but the ordinance itself.
You probably have both, right? Because the licensing part and the requirements for the permit application and all of that part, you could do as police power. But you have to change your zoning ordinance.
Yeah, the zoning ordinance would have to reflect what the board decided to do.
But.
But you have to do a meet other. Yeah, but we're not, but like South Haven Township is doing these zoning ordinance on short-term rentals, or not township, but the villages. None of the other townships are, they're all doing police power.
Yeah, I think you have to have, it's kind of like, and I know you guys don't have marijuana, but when you do, uh, marijuana facilities, you have to have both, you have to have a zoning ordinance, you have to have police power ordinance. And they have to be adopted at the same time, but often we want the planning commission's input, even though it's police power. You know, the township board might want to know what the planning commission thinks those requirements and regulations should be.
Well, if you're, if you're looking for input, I'll give you my input, um. I have one next to my house, so I'm fully aware of. What it's like, so, but I am also very highly not in favor of. More government control, so I am in favor of, um. Trying to rework our ordinance to permit them under certain conditions, because I believe the benefits outweigh the drawbacks. And I would also be in favor of a notice that we are going to do this instead of a moratorium.
What benefits? What benefits? You specify.
Okay.
Uh, I'm sorry.
The benefits, you specified the benefits.
Um, just the ability for our residents to make additional income. I, I mean, I, I, I don't have one, but I, I assume that's a benefit.
Any thoughts, Karen?
Uh, I think it's important to have the planning commission a part of this, um, to have the. Oh, not the open house, but public comment and stuff, so. I don't really think about the moratorium, I just think that the planning commission should be more involved with it.
More moratorium or, uh, notice?
Not the moratorium, I guess a notice if needed, but.
Mary?
I'm sorry.
Marking hard butt.
Well, wait a minute, wait a minute, hold on, um. Why are you abstaining, Mary? Oh, actually.
We're not voting.
Yeah, we're not voting on anything, right? I think we're just asking, like, what's your opinion on what we should do as a township?
You know, I thought about that, can I give my opinion in that vote?
Wait, why?
We're not voting on anything.
Do you want a short-term rental?
No, I have clients that have short-term rentals, so we talk about that. So I would rather keep my opinion to myself on this.
Okay.
Ken, do it.
Okay, well, I guess. Ken, Ken, Ken can't vote either, because he has.
We're not voting on anything.
I know, but, you know, I'm just, I'm just saying.
I gave up my short-term rentals.
Yeah, we're all off. Okay.
I haven't done short-term rental for a while.
I'll let that go. Uh. So, again, let me get the, the cobwebs out. A mor- a moratorium would. The only benefit from that would be to not allow. Any more. Uh, short terms. For, let's pick a day, six months.
Not, the township would not be able to approve any issue, any.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And that would give us time to. Change our ordinance. Rewrite it or even a new one, whatever the case may be.
Amen, yeah.
Yeah, to. Take care of the issue.
Correct. But you can do, to be clear, you can go amend your ordinance without a moratorium.
Correct, yeah, correct, yeah. Okay. Then I would, uh. I, I would agree with that, the last statement, I. We obviously have to do something.
Right, I, I guess, I guess what we're looking for is. Where this board currently sits on. Are we going to not allow them or allow them with restrictions, right?
I.
I just gathered from those four comments that. The idea was notice and put together an ordinance and have the planning commission work through it, and did you guys could vote it up or down?
Okay, I'm sorry, that wasn't clear from Gary.
That's why.
Ordinance, ordinance would have restrictions in.
Presumably, yeah.
Yeah, well.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we have one next to us. Actually, a couple. And, uh. I can see some things happening that are not going to be really. Good for the rest of the neighbors. I'll just leave it there. Now, we're, I, I'm, I'm year-round resident. A lot of the neighbors are. Seasoned. So some of this won't affect them. Especially if the short terms are year-round, which some are. But, that's my view.
So I give you the information you need, Ken? I think.
Well, we're gonna, we're just gonna do a notice. To let everyone know that we're working on an ordinance, right?
I have motion to publish a notice provided by attorney and have the planning commission to start developing a draft short-term rental zone ordinance amendment.
You go, girl, I think you got it.
You good?
It is.
So you made that motion, Karen?
Sure.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Barry? Karen, your vote?
Yeah.
Uh, I'm going to abstain, I've had a thirty-year, uh. Rental on Saddle Lake, and, uh. Maybe that does commit, uh.
So I think in, every, every board member has to decide whether their. Judgment would be influenced by their personal financial stake in it, right? As a general matter. I'm not sure that there's any financial impact of that motion, when it comes to actually approving an ordinance that specifies locations and requirements. I think that it would, just saying we're going to send a notice or working on an ordinance, and there's going to be an ordinance, there's nobody to possibly have a financial stake, I don't think, in the outcome of that. But, all that said, can't force anybody to vote, so if you think your financial.
Well, like I said, I've, I've had it for thirty years, I'm not doing it anymore, I, I'm going to abstain. Mary?
Same.
Mary, Mary is abstaining, Jason?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Uh, now, should I even be working on that ordinance?
Yeah, I don't think there's a conflict until you're voting on an ordinance that actually has requirements in it, right? Like a location or something that you would have a financial stake in the outcome of.
I'm, I'm pretty sure that. You, as well as MTA. Has those available.
We were going to work on it, like, together, the ordinance, yeah.
Yeah, so. We can do it that way.
So who's going to take care of the ordinance then?
I think we would provide a draft.
I could provide the draft.
Laura. Why, why would you do that? Why would you?
You've already provided us a draft.
Well, oh, okay, well.
I was going to say, who provided this?
She provided the draft.
Sorry.
Says ordinance twenty, twenty-five oh oh three. Is that?
That's the, is that the moratorium or?
I think that's the moratorium.
No, the moratorium is, is. It has X's, no, I've got two different.
So there's a resolution for the moratorium and then the moratorium document, is that what you have?
I've got. The whole moratorium with the exhibits.
Okay.
And then this is an ordinance. To adopt short-term rental regulations.
So when you say you're going to work on the ordinance, I'm not sure what you mean.
You mean the planning commission, correct?
Oh, as a planning commission.
I can take it.
I thought, I misunderstood.
Please do.
Take it.
I'll take it. And, and I'll, I'll move it, you want the planning commission to move an ordinance, I can work with Laura and we'll move it.
Okay.
Thank you. Got it.
Okay. I've got a two thing. I three, discuss transfer station shelter for tires. Uh, back in July, we approved, uh, funding. Did we change that at the last meeting to get rid of the tire stuff?
Correct.
So that was all eliminated at the last meeting.
Correct. County's working on.
That's all I needed to know.
Tire.
Uh, consider updating the resolution, uh, twenty-twenty-one oh twelve township fee schedule. Didn't we assign somebody to take the action to take a look at that and update the, uh. Fee schedule for. Meeting in the future?
I can do that.
I'm going to say treasure probably the best.
Just leave it that I was a great volunteer, good for my job.
There's no action on that.
Thanks, Mary.
Do that, excellent, Mary, thank you. A new business, uh, receipt of supervisor, uh, recommended budget for twenty-six, twenty-seven. It's just a document that I have submitted it. And we're, we'll have some scheduled meetings to go over the budget.
Ken, do you have any sort of special meeting schedule in mind for that, if we're shooting to have this done by the thirty-first of December? I, I think. I remember last year's budget took. What, four or five special meetings?
Last day, we only had three members show up, and we had to approve it, we had no choice to, to vote something down or not vote something down, and everyone had to vote yes to get it through.
I guess I'm just.
Avoid that.
I guess I'm just asking, could we get those meetings on the calendar sooner than later? Assuming there's going to be three or four of them, probably.
You've got holidays and.
Right.
Uh, if you could give us dates that you're available, it's probably best to do it on a Saturday and start it sometime on a Saturday morning, then.
Uh, I can generally do any Saturday unless I'm out of town.
Do you want to set one of the Saturdays right now?
Sure, why not? Um. How many iterations do you think we'll need?
Well, depends on how much time we take on a Saturday, we could get through most of the budget probably, uh. In about six hours, the problem we're going to have is with the fire department. Uh, roads should be pretty easy, we're spending less than last year. Um.
I would say two minimum.
I'd say you need two mediums, a minimum, and if we can do four hours at each one, I think we could wrap it up.
Okay.
Again, the fire department's going to be the big one, and we may have to approve something and do a budget amendment.
The other thing is, is, uh, revenue sharing from the state, we don't know what that is yet. Well, we do, but.
We do, but it just looks like they're going to change it by twelve percent based on twenty-twenty-four.
Yeah.
How about? Mary, are you, are you down south in November yet? Like, what about November first and November twenty-second?
I will be gone.
Like, forever?
Going to Florida, yeah.
All of November?
Well, as long as I can stay gone. So.
When do you leave?
I can stay gone, are you coming back for board meetings?
Well, you'll see, I don't know. Um, I have an Airbnb schedule for the first two, the last week in October and the first week in November. And then I have my way back, so.
October, first week in November, okay.
I was thinking we could go through a first round draft here in October.
That's what I was thinking.
Okay. Are you gone?
How about the eighteenth or the eleventh, or the eleventh? The eighteenth.
Let's go eighteen.
Okay.
What time?
Nine bells.
Nine AM? Nine AM, find my living room, Karen?
Yes.
Do you have to put this in the paper?
No.
Just notice a special meeting.
Wait, no, because it was a budget meeting.
No, it's not your official budget, okay. It's like a workshop, right?
Well, does it help if I give you my Excel spreadsheet that's got all my notes on it, on the side and all my calc? What's in here is a PDF that doesn't have a lot of the stuff.
Sure.
What really helps is if I don't keep changing it and changing it and changing.
Well, I don't plan on changing it, once I give it to you, I'm, the board's going to take any changes now. Did you want a copy of the Excel spreadsheet?
Yeah, send us a copy.
Yes, please.
Good. So we, we got October eighteenth, nine AM.
Correct.
Should we block out nine to one, you said four hours, we could get through most of it, and then we'll see where we sit at the end of it.
It's, it's one o'clock, we'll decide where we're at, and if there's just a little bit, we might want to. Stay an extra half hour and finish it up. But I, I, again, uh. Most of it's going to be very clear and precise and. Not a problem.
Well, it gives us a month to look through it individually, too.
Yeah.
It's helped.
There's a couple of things that we're going to be looking at probably very closely, is going to be the cemetery, the transfer station. Uh, fire department definitely is going to take some time, I mean, just sort of. We're going to do a little bit of that here in the next day, maybe that will help too, so. We got a date, we're good with that? Well, I, I got the last two things I put on here due to the fact that we have. Some probably a difference in of opinion on, on things, and I, I need the board to kind of weigh in on these. We had somebody that asked for a land division split. And they wanted to split their parcel. To give their two children equal parts of their parcel. But the resulting two parcels, uh, meet the lot and furniture requirement. The issue is that they do not meet the four-to-one Devon ratio, which is required by state law. Pardon?
You can't do it.
Can't, right.
Can't do it.
Yeah.
When they teach land division act, they. When they teach land division act, they actually draw this and show this is what you can't like.
Right.
This is, this is the daddy strip, the parcels, you can't do, so.
Yeah.
Just can't do it. So the parent parcel would be behind it then, and then the parents would have the lot behind them then.
I didn't see, I didn't, I didn't, I don't, I didn't try to calculate the measurements if they did it.
I, I, I put it in here. They could go back six hundred and fifty-five feet.
But I didn't figure out if they, if they divided it horizontally rather than vertically and then did an easement for access. I don't know if there's another option there like that, but that's not what they presented. But just taking that long, narrow.
Yeah.
And slicing it like that, it just doesn't mean there.
Isn't there also, I seem to remember from the, the um Michigan State classes on this, that isn't there also a minimum requirement? This might even be in our ordinance, because I, I think I remember this from the planning commission, a minimum requirement of acreage in order to split something at all?
Uh, well, I don't think, I'm not sure that's a problem with this one, but I can't remember what the minimum is.
I, I think it was one acre. You, you ran into that, right?
I know it.
Yeah, yeah.
It's an acre for agriculture.
Okay, okay.
So for ag, it's, it's one acre minimum.
Yeah, these don't have that problem, right? It's about nine point, I think it's nine point nine eight acres.
This parcel?
Yes, that's what it said on GIS.
I'm familiar with this parcel. I wouldn't be shocked if that was nine acres.
That's what I looked up on GIS, so.
Do you have a survey?
Yeah.
That's correct.
Yeah, right here.
Is that right? Okay, yes. I, I think it's nine point nine two or somewhere around there. Yeah, so the resulting parcels are more than four acres. But they just don't mean that four to one depth to width ratio.
So do I have the full comments to lean in?
What?
Is it related to the subject matter right now?
Yeah, this is.
Probably. Have you done this in the past?
According to the assessor, they have done it in the past.
For, for the assessor, they've done it in the past.
Without meeting the four to one ratio?
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
Special, special, what, use or something?
We don't approve them to begin with.
The ordinance says township order that doesn't need, has it designated somebody else?
And think the assessor.
I think the assessor's been doing it for years.
We'll have to change that.
Right, right.
Does that uh cause any concern?
I'm not gonna speak to any other land division because I haven't reviewed or advised on them. I can only speak to the one that I was asked to look at for this.
Okay. Got it.
And we have a different assessor now, I assume, than whenever.
Yeah, I, I I think we have to follow it all.
So how short, I have a question. How short would they, could they make the parent parcel go across the back of both of those?
They can make the parent parcel go across the back. They could go six hundred and fifty-five feet.
Is this where you live now?
No.
Okay.
It's.
I'm trying to look for the address and I'm like, that's why, okay, never mind. I retract all my comments. I'm like, that's not nine acres.
Oh, no. That's where I'm at.
Okay.
So my, on your survey?
Yes.
The larger parcel, you could, you, you, could you take, take that and so the, it wouldn't be exactly the five acres? Just to make it the right ratio? I mean, you can still let them use it. It would just, or would you be?
Are you saying we keep the back and make it the four to one?
Do you have that on there? Yeah.
You, you own this lot, right? This is the parent's lot?
I don't own that.
You own this lot right here then?
I don't own that lot either.
Oh, you only own.
You don't own that one either?
I own those two.
You just.
Yeah, that's why.
I thought you owned them.
No, it's just those two, yeah.
Oh, I thought the one was the parent parcel.
I did too.
What do you do in that case?
Well, if, if I mean, again, I didn't find the measurements, right? But my logical thing was, would you just instead of slicing it down the middle, you slice it there and do some kind of easement for access to the other? Or return, I don't know where the road is. But you just can't do this.
Your kids like each other and they need.
But if you, if you could only sell, but if you could only sell those lots by sixty-six feet, so one of those two would have to be the parcel.
But don't right now, that's all one parcel, like not, and they're supposed to split it down the middle and that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So one of those parcels would have to be the parent parcel that would go across, so.
Not sure it matters for what they're asking then.
But if you own both these lots, then the parent parcel would be one of them and it would have to be cut off at sixty-six feet here. The other option is you put a road down the center of this, right?
An easement?
An easement.
An easement. And then you could the four to one ratio, you'd fall within.
Yeah, if you split it, okay, so horizontal instead of vertical.
See what I just said?
Yeah, but I don't think the back parcel is buildable. That's, that's the issue.
So that's lowland or what?
Well, you, you'd have, this one would be one and this would be the other, but you'd have a road that would come down to the back part.
We just don't have flexibility and I can't, again, speaking to any prior approvals or whether they're done right, but this was the one before us and it doesn't meet that requirement, which is that both the state statute and the ordinance.
Yeah, because I think she actually put it on it once in the process. Or were approved, I'm sorry.
What if they divided it in three? The wetland in the back, make that one with an easement to the front?
I would not have to have an easement.
Can't do it.
To, because you'd have to get to the back. You can't land lock it, so.
I mean, that's an option, yeah.
That gets it for you.
The one was never discussed with um Danielle until I came in to change everything. Um, it was always the issue of the frontage. And then she had discussed the four to one. Um, because I know too on the application that I filled out for land division, it didn't state anything about the four to one. Um, so she had mentioned that that may have to be something that gets changed. Because it just states that with a land division. I, I had no idea with the four to one.
Oh, I see.
Well, let's see if we can get uh Danielle to try to work with you to find something that will work and meet the criteria by putting an easement in between the two lots where you take your driveway off those and still have a, a path to the back part. We'll, we'll work with her to see what we can make work for you. How about that?
I, I'm willing to do that, but I'm curious, so with all the other ones that were approved in the past.
Yeah, but we're today and we're reading the law today and.
Well, how long ago were those?
Twenty-one and twenty-two, twenty-two and twenty-three.
Danielle, oh, it's been.
I don't think we had Danielle then, did we? We hadn't.
I just wondered who made the list.
We had Ian.
It was the prior assessor, but they're pretty recent splits.
Mm-hmm.
Who approves those?
So your ordinance and printed says.
We've always had the.
In most places, it's, it's often the assessor. I don't disagree with that, but the way your ordinance was written, I felt. Turn it the right way. We can get creative.
Oh, hi.
CA wouldn't be involved in that at all?
I'm so sorry, I'm trying to pull the.
He's surprised that Tasha missed that.
Initially.
No budget, here we go. All right.
She doesn't work for us anymore, right?
It says land, land in the township shall not be divided without the prior review and approval of the township zoning administrator and township board or its designee.
The assessor's probably the designee.
He's surprised if Tasha missed that.
But, but yeah, yeah, that. And then I don't know if the board ever formally designated the assessor. That would be the logical person though, I agree.
You would think so.
Yeah, we'll figure it out. If, if with an easement, I mean, that's just changing your legal descriptions.
But it also takes away from.
Yeah.
But I thought it was all wetland in the back or no?
In the back, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you'd have, so how far back is it? Wetland?
How far back can they go? What's the four to one ratio? One sixty-eight times four?
It's like six eighty or something like that, that.
I was looking at one that got approved. Um, what, what's your name?
Sorry?
What's your last name?
Banner.
Banner. I'm just looking it up, that's why I asked.
Well, that'd be al- almost half.
She could split it in four with an easement if it's never been split before and give the kids each two and two. Or it'll just be different parcel numbers.
Yes. They got two parcels.
Yes.
With an easement.
Yeah.
And they'd have the usable.
And then you could use all that, yeah. So the four to one is six fifty-six or whatever, so.
Yeah.
If you split this because you should have four splits in this parcel, split it again at half, but with the easement, and then you'd still have that. You can, it'll, they would just have two parcel numbers instead of one.
Is it currently on a regu- a road? It's not currently accessed by an easement, right? It's not a regular road?
Yeah, it's on the main road, yeah.
With one driveway? I assume.
There is. There's no driveway now.
Yeah, there is a drive to the right.
Yes. Yeah, just double check your, I mean, I don't know if you don't build it back, just double check your road commissions. Usually they have a limit on the number of parcels that can be accessed by an easement.
She could still put a driveway on each one. The easement would just be for the back two lots.
Yeah, if the, if the, if the road commission, and I'm not who, who in this at all, I think it's good problem solving. Um, if the road commission allows two driveways.
Two driveways, yeah.
They're a hundred and sixty-four feet of cars. I think they will without a problem.
Yeah, I think shouldn't have. Let's throw that out. Like, if you only had an easement, there's a limit on how many.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Does the land division act though? I, I swear there's remember this in the test. There's a certain.
What are you saying, Mary?
Is that only an ag?
Right here, if they.
No, I know, but it's, I think.
If they go back to six fifty-six, they have to.
The number of.
Right here.
You make out of a certain.
Put a road right here.
So like, I think. You have to have more than ten to do four split or something.
Okay, but with an easement.
Yeah. I think, so sorry to interrupt. I think Jason's correct. I don't think you can do four divisions on a parcel.
I don't either.
Ten acres.
I think you have to have minimum ten acres and four splits.
Yeah. So you just have to put the road to the back, back lot.
I think we can work on it and figure out something that would.
Yeah.
Do the line. Yeah.
Yeah, we need to work on. Not, not to work on here, we'll, we'll get with our assessor, see what we can work out.
I didn't mean to come across as harsh. I apologize if I did. It's just we can't do it in that particular way.
And I, and I understand that. And, and maybe it's just that I'm just focused on I know today is today. But you've done the splits with a lot less requirements than what I currently have right now.
The wrongs don't make a right here.
You're right at all.
I lost the lawsuit based on that. Uh, J three. I got a uh driveway permit. When I was looking at the driveway permit, I noticed that uh part of the subdivision was vacated by the titles of the property. And I can't find any evidence that the law was followed where you have to have a court order and you have to update Eckenberg subdivision. We had this issue a while back on Saddle Lake public access where the individual wanted to take part of the public access for his parking. And they tried to do it without revising the subdivision. And that got rejected. So I think we're back in the same situation with this one. Unless they could provide documentation that they properly vacated it and updated the subdivision to the court.
Is this the so they just wanna put a driveway where this little white line is?
No, they, they wanna get rid of uh this, this whole you got the other sketch?
I say, I couldn't follow what they were doing either, so.
They, they own there's Pleasant Drive right here, right?
Mm-hmm.
They own these lots on the back and they wanna block this off.
They want, they wanna get rid of these.
That's right.
So.
And have Pleasant Drive continue, correct?
They own what's in the red and they wanna eliminate Pleasant Drive within the red.
Okay.
What, if, that's a lot of lots. Is that all gonna be one?
One great big parcel. But it's part of the subdivision and without properly updating the subdivision, you can't eliminate a drive from what I understand. Is that correct?
I generally agree with that statement.
And this one right here, um these are all little lot, this was.
That, that, that's there. She need to look at.
Oh.
You need to look at uh.
I did do that. Okay.
Now you wanna go to the other one?
What is, is that?
That's the one that I, I matched up. They're, they're taking forty, forty feet of this lot, all these lots. And then what they did is they gave themselves a title saying they vacated Pleasant Drive. They said they vacated it, but there's no evidence it was vacated.
Okay.
And that's what got my attention and.
They put it in the deed? What, in what document did they say that it was vacated?
Uh, I believe they have a uh, I gave you the document, I think.
You didn't. I couldn't find where it said that, but I might have missed it out.
Are they here? Is the person that's, the one that's here right now? Because I just sold this property.
You're the one that sold that property?
Yeah, but it's, it's, it was different lots than this. I sold Randy's Lane and Lover's Lane right here. I had the sellers. Um.
I say, I say the titles uh to go buying properties will indicate Pleasant Drive vacated.
You're just.
About, that's in my, in my instructions, uh.
Three, just says description.
Well, but I was looking for the document that said it.
Well, the, the document is on the plat, plats for the town uh.
You show me, I, I.
Is it on the driveway permit?
Where are they saying that they vacated it?
I looked at the description on Banbury County Parcel Viewer where it stated that they vacated.
So you go to GIS to see that. So the applicants didn't say that when they applied for a driveway permit?
I, I.
Right here's the driveway permit.
Okay, so I don't have the.
Let me see the driveway permit too.
Well, no, hold on. Okay, good afternoon. We received a driveway permit for five two three nine nine Randy's Lane.
Yeah, I just sold that. It's four separate parcels.
Because.
And that's subdivision.
Randy's Lane is not certified, but the road commission, a driveway permit approval is not required. Uh, so they will be, yeah, nevermind, that's a different thing.
And they sent that to us.
The road commission.
The road commission didn't.
Which they send us every driveway permit.
So they don't need a driveway permit? So they don't need a driveway permit?
You don't give driveway permits, right?
Yeah.
Commission does, so what are they asking for from the township?
Yeah.
Well, when I looked at it, I, I went to the state and pulled up the Eckenberg subdivision to see that it was revised to abandon it and it's not.
What are, what action have they asked for from the township, any?
They want a building permit to build right over Pleasant Drive.
Okay, that's, so it's not about a driveway permit?
No.
What does, do we have a, have either building permit application?
I don't think we have that, the Tasha said she had one and they're ready to go.
That might be one that we need to look at, I need the application.
And I can send you the title work for that, because I did not see Pleasant, there was nothing in the title work that said Pleasant, so I will send that to you guys.
Yeah, and it could.
If it helps them get their driveway.
I'm happy to look and stuff, I can't render an opinion based on what I have, though.
Okay.
But I agree with Ken, you can't change a subdivision, that's a state law, so he's right about that.
No, I agree, if you want to make it part of play, you gotta sue all the property owners, it's a big thing.
We'll get, uh, we'll get their application for a permit. Hey, that could, that could, now we're, we're back, we ready to go to com- public comment? Yeah, I hope so too.
Public comment?
Public comment.
Hi, Morris Focus, one zero two seven two fifty first Street, we're in Lakeview, Michigan. Regarding those S T Rs, as, um, your attorney advised you, they're going, they're going to be illegal. And I don't see, I would like to see, was there really reasoning, but, for trying to pay ordinance for that? I don't know if you remember, I didn't even want to interrupt you earlier, I know I did, my apology, I don't want to interrupt you earlier before you voted. But you do have a petition, uh, I only got seventy people over a few days, couple hours every day. Uh, that wants to, just, you know, finish this, be done with this. Ben all those, we can ban it, just enforce current benefits, I should say. Okay, I don't, maybe you forgot about this, do you need more people to tell you, I, I'll get you more signatures, just tell me how many do you need? Two hundred people, it is no problem, maybe we should let people, the township vote on this. And I know you mentioned that, um, uh, you're pro limited government, so am I. I'm hundred percent with you. Uh, but, um, well, you said, uh, one of the benefits would be for people in township to make extra money, unfortunately, those S T Rs that we have. Very few of them are owned by people in the township, they're from investors from Illinois, Kalamazoo and other areas. Because the people who actually live here, then have money to purchase their property and rent them to make extra money. This is a poor, poor option, so this actually is not, uh, benefit, I would say. And I don't see any clear benefit for the people in township, uh, having those, uh, here, okay? And, um, as of myself, I don't understand why do I have to move? Because of those few people who rent and do business in residential area. It's breaking my heart because I just built the house, I just finished. And, uh, not for sale, I want to leave. I'm thinking this about.
My name is Steve Ozak, and I own two properties on north side of, uh, Saddle Lake. Adjacent properties, more than my father and I inherited it. And, uh, the first thing I wanted to ask was, do you have records of people with short-term rentals in your possession?
We do not have all of them, we have about thirty of them.
My question is this, how are you going to get good data on grandfathering in, because I know you were concerned about lawsuits? Can you prove to me that you did that? The only way I think you could is, you must have claimed this on your tax returns, so any money that you made with unearned income in this, you, you submitted it to the government, obviously. That would be really your only method of proving that you had short-term. Unless you didn't, you know, supply that information to the government when you rented, you know, the income that you got from your rental. I don't know how many people do that or have that information available. So I'm not really concerned about grandfathering, they have to take your word for it, I said you grandfathered or you did. Because you really have no proof unless you contact those people who were there and they write affidavits that said, oh yes, I, I rented from, you know, X and X and X person or whatever over any period of time, so you have no official records of any previous. Correct, am I correct or incorrect?
Oh.
Do you have any records for short-term rentals, period?
We probably have some information, like when they bought it.
When who bought it?
When they bought the property and turned it into a rental.
You mean, they would have to put that on there, I'm going to use this property as a rental?
Well, we probably know that it's a rental now. I, I know, I know a lot, well, I live on, I live on Saddle Lake, I kind of know the longer ground.
Oh, I know you did, and you can look it up, but you don't know how long that's been going on.
No one has, when you say grandfather, to me, that means prior lawful non-conforming use, no one has a prior lawful non-conforming use of short-term rental. Any, any, any regulation that the township adopts is going to be prospective, so it can, people who've been doing it could do it under that, and people who didn't do it could do it under that. I don't think that any of the conversation and then that we're going to allow short-term rentals only for people who were already doing that.
That's correct.
So I'm not sure.
No, I understand what you're saying, but did you bring up something about lawsuits for people who would get canceled it? If I said, I've been doing this for ten years, so I should continue to be able to do it.
That wouldn't be that hard to prove it, um, like, you know.
How would you do it coming?
Uh, go to any one of your tenants, go out to them, rent your after year, ask them to come forward and, yeah, I rented ten years ago, it's, wouldn't be that hard. To, to find people that have been renting.
Isn't that hearsay, I can pay somebody to do that, wouldn't you have to show something on your taxes, wouldn't that be the?
No, you ask how to prove it, you could get someone that actually rented. Come forward and say, yes, but in the summer of two thousand and five or two thousand and ten, and then again in twenty fifteen, I rented at that place. You ask, could I get rev- could I get evidence if I was a short-term renter owner? And I wanted to prove it, I've been doing it for ten or twenty years.
Yeah.
It wouldn't be that hard to do it. I, I would simply go to the people that had rented from me and ask them to support, um, with affidavits or.
Well, how do you know that's accurate, though?
Because I rented to them.
But that's hearsay.
Because it wouldn't matter, because it wasn't lawful in the first place, but a court would decide if the evidence was sufficient, yeah.
Okay, so that's really not an issue, the, of the grandfathering, and if you have the ability to do that.
No. I'm trying to say.
Well, here's, here's, here's what's going on, I, what I'm seeing is people purchasing their own properties now. And then, you know, their, their initial intent, at least when we were talking to them, was that, okay, we're, we're moving in, and then all of a sudden, it's like, well, we've got the whole summer booked for a rental. And, uh, my, my property's been trespassed on three, four times. And I've got photographs and pictures to show that, and I called up these, the people who are doing the short-term rental, and they, you know, it's like irresponsible on their part for not explaining all these rules and things.
Right.
And I'm talking, well, do I put up a six-foot fence that goes for two hundred yards? All the way from the front to the back of my property to separate mine from their property? So, and then, you know, noises, not even people that, you know, I don't know if they're vetted or who these people are that are coming in. It's basically the same problem we had with the other property, they want to put those thirteen units in, bring all those people in and out. This is sort of the same idea, but granted, you know, this house will hold supposedly eleven or twelve people in it. So you're gonna get eleven or twelve people floating around for five days or a week. You don't know who they are and they're walking on your property, and if I'm not around to see it. You know, this, this, this is the issue, and as far as, you know, helping the township. I don't know if it's food store, the grocery store they go to, but I think the majority of people that rent in this area go to South Haven to spend all their money, they don't do it, you know, at the taco place over there at the other food store. So, somebody brought that up as a reason to continue doing short-term rentals, that, because it helps community and township, and I disagree full-heartedly with that. In addition to the fact that I don't know these people who are coming adjacent to my property and using it when I'm not around. So, you know, there's a lot of problems with this, and I, and I understand that trying to enforce it is going to be difficult because you can't you know, who, who would enforce it, but at least if you have it on the books and you can then document in the future all these violations, then, you know, maybe something will happen in the future here. And again, like you said, this is R two, so it's really not supposed to be rented and begin with, but I can see what you're saying, well, you know, I've been doing it for twenty years, does that make it right, it's sort of the way these things are being divided, you know? You sort of have to, I, I think you'd have to follow the ordinances and obey the law.
Correct.
That exists already. So, that's my concern, thank you.
Your name?
No, you don't have to stand up. My name is Megan Sater, and I have a couple drawings on the short-term rentals too. If, if, has anybody checked with Sogta, South Haven and Baroda on their short-term rental issues? It's a big controversy in all the lake shore towns because it's overrunning the towns, and there's less homes for working-class families, and it's starting to become a big problem in that aspect. Another aspect is, we already have unique fire department. How many thousands of people go to South Haven every summer? South Haven ups their police presence for the summer or the tourist season. We don't have backup for extra fire calls, for emergencies, for bonfires that might get out of control. There, it's, it's a huge issue with that. How many people are you going to let be in one rental? The fire department needs to know how many renters are in a house. So if it's capped at ten and there's fifteen in there, how many people are the fire department going to know how to, who to look for? So, when considering that, and all for tourism, it's part of my income too. But it's a bigger issue than just saying, yes, let's do it. And if it's allowed permits, you, but make those permits pay for upgrading the fire department. If they want the money, if they want the tourism here, you gotta pay to support it. And I think that's all I had to say about it.
The general.
Dan?
Dan Williams, I have a side one also. I've got two things that I can bring up, one is, uh, when Gary stated that, uh, he, uh, I'm with, uh, Vesper, mandatory, how is that mandatory?
By, by state law.
It's weird, it's mandatory to us to accept it, in other words, right?
If the property owner sold the property to the entity and they're going to build in here. Uh, P A two thirty-three, correct me if I'm wrong, says they're allowed to do that.
So they can go to the state for approval for the Michigan Public Service Commission, regardless of what the townships says about it, you know, so if we don't have an ordinance, they can still get it approved here.
I know an elderly gentleman that lives on, uh, at First Street, he owns a house on one side, he owns property on the other side. And all he wants to do is build a pole on a crossroad, on his property, but he's not being allowed to.
So the, the renewable energy stuff is part of a statute that is only about renewable energy. So local zoning still applies to most things, it's just this unique issue of renewable energy where we're talking about the state's involvement.
And another thing I want to bring up is, uh, I found it kind of offensive the way you worried then, Gary, uh, about the taxpayers not being knowledgeable enough. And, uh, basing it basically on the fact that because you had, spoke to have some type of degree, that that was offensive towards taxpayers, I was at the meeting with Vesper also, and there was quite a few people there that had some very intelligent questions. And they were very knowledgeable about what was going on, just like with the fire department and the possibility of fires. I mean, it, it caught a lot of people offensive when, uh, Vesper was saying, oh yeah, we'll buy you a fire truck. Well, if it catches on fire, you have to let it run, what's the sense in that, for one thing? And, uh, the smoke from it, it would be safe up to, what'd they say, a hundred or two hundred yards? And that's a lot also, I can't see how we can allow somebody that doesn't actually know what you're talking about to, to, to produce something around here like that, that could be harmful. My wife's in a mobility gear and on oxygen, because when we lived in Battle Creek, we were there during the oil spill. We were five blocks away from the river, and they said, oh, as long as you're uh, past two, you, uh, the only danger would be within the first two blocks. People from, uh, out by the airport from, uh, river were passing away from it, so, and my wife, that's why he's on oxygen now, we were five blocks away. So, this stuff about the danger of it also, uh, gives me a lot of concern. Which a lot of people at the meeting were concerned about, especially with the schools. But the part that, where you made it sound like taxpayers didn't know what you're talking about, because you had a degree or something. Me too, I, my bit, I'm not saying good, a few, for my business, I mean, you know, you word games a little bit differently when it comes to something like that.
Well, I didn't mean any offense, what I meant was, I don't think the taxpayers understand that the state is pushing this on us, we, we really, we really don't have. We have two options, either to have, try to get the best we can for the township, for the taxpayers, or let the state shove it down our throats, and, and I don't think a lot of people really understand what position they're in, that's what I meant.
Yeah, I can accept that, I can, I can also state that, uh, uh, firstly, I'd like to go to the state. I wouldn't want the, the township to get involved, because again, it's going to be a large lawsuit, just like there's going on in Marshall right now about the battery factory. The, the taxpayers voted that down, it went through anyway, and now there's large lawsuits going on. And I think the same thing's gonna happen with this. It's gonna shut them down, just like Marshall.
Thanks, Dan.
Yep. Uh, I received public comment via email from Dixie Kovak, um, regarding Vesper or answers, what was it?
Answers to the questions from.
Answers to the questions from Vesper, I, I'm going to include that email into the record in the meeting minutes.
Anyone else for public comment?
Yeah, I wanted to make one more, uh, comment, and that is, and what, what I see is a possible trend where when, for instance, if I put my property up for sale and the highest bidder is some corporation or some person that's funded with a lot of money and I sell that property to them, and then they decide to do short-term rentals on it. I hate to see that keep increasing around Saddle Lake and other places where you don't even have true residents that are there, but people who come in and use it as a investment and then changing the complete face of the, you know, neighborhood and culture of the lake, so I see that as a possibility in the future. And, you know, that scares me and I don't like the idea of it at all. So, I think that's another reason that we need to really keep a close eye on, on rentals that are being done.
See me after the meeting. I hear your name and, uh, I want to put you on the list for talking to to get your issues. All the issues, not just what we could talk about here, okay?
Absolutely.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
Okay, I recently moved to Michigan, this area. And we live in Lumineal, but right across the street from Columbia, so if, if something happened with that battery factory, it could affect us, and it, it might right that everybody around here has, uh, wells and stuff. So, something happens to their battery, and, and it could be something small, it goes down into water that can affect everyone. And there's also some other things too. Um, how does, how does the bill, how does the township even benefit from it? Are you gonna get your electricity from this, this battery place? It, are you gonna benefit from it? Are we, are you? Is it gonna cost you more or less?
Well, the property taxes, even if they go through the state.
But is it gonna cost you more or less for your electricity?
It doesn't, it doesn't matter at all.
I don't know, my last year bill was one ninety and it was up to five seventy this year, so they've already raised our electric twice, consumers.
Oh, I see, they give you this energy bill.
They're not promising any reduction in electric.
It is, so they're gonna sell it to somebody else, right?
Back to consumers. No, they.
Well, that's a lie, yeah.
There's a recording of their meeting, of the, of the August, um, special meeting that has a ton of information and slides that goes into that, I want to look at it, just for.
It's on YouTube, we have it on YouTube.
Okay, so what about those, they're supposed to be maybe noise issue also? They can reach as far as three miles away.
It would be a home.
Yes, all of this stuff's been discussed. I know, I'm asking about that, so why, if, if you have all these issues, why didn't you vote for something like that, that's going to harm them?
We didn't.
I, I, I'm saying, why would you? I'm not saying you did, it's a vote, you're like, with me, that, you didn't, you know? So, I, I'm just a big believer in fighting, so, I come from Illinois, that's it.
But your state legislature.
Yeah, well. And when it does.
Don't even get me started.
When it does reach the Public Service Commission, it is still a contested case, and it's the township and the public can still participate in that, in fact, the township can participate at the expense of the developer, they actually do provide money for the township's involvement in that contested case to share the concerns of the township, so that doesn't necessarily mean we can. That doesn't necessarily mean we can, who knows what impact that will have, but, um, there are still opportunities to have public input at them, yes.
Yeah.
How do we get updated on when that happens? We won't know, I mean, we'll know when we get an application, so I'd say, you know, keep in touch with your township board meetings and watch the agenda packets online, because I'm sure it'll be discussed.
Where are you with the lawsuit?
We are still waiting for the Michigan Court of Appeals to schedule an argument.
They have not scheduled.
They have not scheduled the argument.
Are they Democrat?
The Court of Appeals has a lot of judges, so it is not.
All the judges you got, are they on the Democratic side?
I do not, honestly do not know the answer to that, so. Um, it is supposed to be on a fast track, it has not been scheduled, I'm conscious.
It's not scheduled.
Yeah, they are nonpartisan seats, so, can't speak to that. For their political reasons.
The only, the only thing I wanna say is, ever since I've been involved in the planning commission and and asked to take a look at the Vespers thing, I've been following what's happening in other communities around the state. And I think we have to stop beating ourselves up, I think we've worked really hard, every single community that I've read about that has had been approached by either Vespers or their competitor Key Energy or something like that. Has all taken, they've all taken eighteen months to two years to to get through the process, every single community that's been a, been. Uh, approached with this idea has had very same reactions that we had, which means we're being reasonable. And I just, it it's, these are difficult issues, and 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 then it's complicated by the fact. That the state is asking us, a a township, to regulate this thing, and that's a concept that none of us are used to, we're used to the state. Regulating utilities and industrial facilities and so on, so. I think it's been a very difficult issue, and I I think we should maybe pat ourselves on the back for taking the time, getting the information. Um, and I also know that investors' answers, that Dixie has, um, that Dixie Kovach's. Uh, version, there there are scenarios where they won't go ahead with the state, and so just stand up and and see what happens.
I get that, I think we come to that information.
The, which information specifically?
That you just said, there are instances where they won't.
They provided an answer.
It's on the public record, yeah.
Get the agenda packet, so if you go, yeah. You know how to do that, okay, there, let me go to.
I do applaud the hard work that people have done.
Yeah.
You know, it's hard, yeah, imagine, I, but you can, and, um, but I just.
Major your mom's secrets.
Major your time.
I really don't want.
We're still in public comments.
Yeah.
Okay, correspondence, I guess, maybe we move to.
Any more public comments that we're at three minutes?
Yeah, we're we're gonna, we're gonna end this here, uh, correspondence and announcements, we have any, Cara? Nope, board comments, any board of comments?
There's election in November for library, Millen.
Library, you don't have?
Okay. Anyone?
The messenger.
Yep. I I have a quick one regarding short-term rentals, thank you for your input, I just wanna be clear that we we're not at all saying. We're just gonna allow them carte blanche, like they have been, I think what we're just saying is, let's at least go through the process. Of trying to establish an ordinance that has restrictions, that will all be subject to a public hearing, which you can come to, bring as many people as you want, like, it's not, it's not a settled issue yet. Um, I just think that we voted to go through the process of trying to sort out the issue that's been an issue for a while, just to be clear. And then Dan, I wanna say something about your comment, about your friend or your neighbor, who had the thing, he he's got property across the street, wants to put a pole barn out there. Previous planning commission tried to address that issue, but it was blocked, look into it, come talk to me if you want.
I I wanted to mention about what you said about the short-term rental, I think that has been brought up basically because of the. The people that wanted to build on, uh, having fourteen, uh, of, uh, Saddle Lake. We had a big meeting about it, and they brought their.
They got a short one.
They wanted to put a little dome house thing on West Lake. And that's one of the, uh, short-term rentals we brought up, which would have made it more or less like a motel. I think that's basically what the, we need to think about is not allowing by motel move in in the area.
Thank you, Dan. Gary?
Real quickly, people, this, this blew my mind. I got an I T guy that shared with me an interview, and I'm gonna do this real quickly, because it started. Information from eighteen seventy, and it goes all the way up to two thousand and four. And you're talking about things that are gonna be happening? You're gonna be able. Or there's gonna be solar, there's gonna be solar highways where you're charging your car as you're driving, there's gonna be. Aquaponics where you can grow food without soil, that, there are robots, they're already doing those, some of this stuff. You, it it's hard to even imagine, but it's coming. Yeah, it is, some of it's already here. Uh, that's all I'm gonna say, it's crazy.
Hey, I'm adjourning the meeting at.